Welcome to Clackamas County Planning Commission. Tonight, we're going to be discussing legislative public hearings for two ZDO two eight three. The public hearing is now open for consideration of ZDO.
Chair, Chair Murphy, hold on one second. Let's have Darcy go ahead and call the roll.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
That's okay. You have your legislative hearing script, which is great, but we want to just do our regular agenda items. So we'll have Darcy call the roll and then check for public comment for items not on the agenda. Commissioner Pack?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Schrodle? Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Commissioner Loops?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Present.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Moss, he's indicated that he would be late. And Commissioner Middaugh is still out of town. Chair Murphy, let's go ahead and just recognize there are three, four staff members here tonight. I'm Jennifer Hughes. I'm the planning director. Darcy Renhart is our administrative specialist in the department and keeps us all on track, running the Zoom and all. Principal Planner Martha Fritzi is here tonight, and then Ellen Rogan from Public and Government Affairs is also here.
Hi, Ellen. Thank you for joining us.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment this time that's not related to our hearing?
Yeah. And so to clarify, if you're in the audience and you're here to testify on either of the items on the agenda, this is not the time to do that. If you want to address the planning commission on something that is not on the agenda, but is within their purview, this is the time for you to raise your hand. And I do have Bill Leslie.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Bill.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Bill Leslie. I live at three seven six two five Southeast Kelso Road. That's in the city of Sandy in Clackamas County. Before I forget to do it, and I sometimes do, thanks so much for all the work you do. I'm a former City of Sandy Council member, and I know how hard our planning commission worked. And I have to think that your job is even harder than theirs was. So thank you for your hours. As I said, I live on Kelso Road in Sandy. I apologize. I'm going to semi read this. My properties are adjacent to a solar farm that was approved by Clackamas County for and began development in two thousand twenty-two. That farm is located at three seven zero seven one Southeast Kelso Road. I share a total of seven hundred and fifty-one feet of boundaries with the solar farm. I'm surrounded on two sides by it. A condition of this approval for the facility was that the solar farm be separated from residential areas in the city of Sandy by a wall of seven or eight foot arbor vida. This facility was not compliant with the requirement when construction began, and it's still not compliant today. More than a hundred linear feet of arbor vida were either dead or dying before construction began. And obviously, they did not provide shielding from the panels. In other places along the property line, there were no trees and still others instead of arbor vida, they had maple and Douglas firs, stray maples and Douglas firs, which did not provide adequate shielding. I repeatedly brought this to the attention of the solar farm between last May and November, and they repeatedly assured me they would replace the dead and dying trees with eight foot arbor vida. They were not telling the truth. They bought a few eight foot trees, but mostly they bought four foot trees. When I protested, they said this is maintenance. We're required to maintain the eight foot arbor vida hedge. This is maintaining them, and in four or five years, they will be eight feet tall. They said by this purchase, they were compliant. Just to make sure that trees were available, I contacted a couple of nurseries, and there are plenty of eight foot arbor vida in the area. In December two thousand twenty-two, I filed a formal complaint with Clackamas County. Your reference is violation via invictor zero zero five one six two two, and I'll repeat that via invictor zero zero five one six two two. By the way, I'll send my notes along to Darcy after this is over, and you'll get basically everything I'm saying in writing. A notice of violation was finally sent out by code enforcement six months later in June of two thousand twenty-three. Court enforcement has now approved that four foot trees, which are not compliant with your approval, can remain. With code enforcement's consent, they have now begun to erect fabric fences less than five foot tall to augment the separation. You can actually stand on the ground and see through the fabric fences. They don't provide any separation visually. And they also don't provide any shielding of the sounds that come from the solar farms. So from my mind, they're not compliant with what you required, and they're wholly inadequate to accomplish what you set out to do. I asked code enforcement whether the planning commission had made an amendment to the conditions of approval. I was told, no, they have not. Code enforcement says it's a four-year remedy that we can approve without going back to planning commission. I think your conditions of approval were probably pretty reasonable, and I thank you for them. But I find it very surprising that your conditions were not compliant when the project started, still aren't. And code enforcement has now said they won't be compliant for another four years, probably. They're guessing that the trees grow a foot a year. I'm attending this meeting for two reasons. First of all, I want you to know that your requirements are being waived. And as I said, I thought they were pretty reasonable. And perhaps more importantly, I want citizens of Clackamas County to understand that if, even if the requirements and conditions that you guys put into an approval sound great, they can't rely on them because code enforcement can waive them. I don't want to take too much of your time, but I'm available if you have any questions. And as I said, I will send these notes along in writing and ask that Darcy distribute them.
Murph, you're on mute.
Thank you, Tom. Any commissioners have any questions?
I have a question. I, to be honest, I don't remember the exactly what we did in the conditions. But ultimately, the conditions that we recommend are then up to the Plac- Clackamas County Commissioners to whether they include those conditions or not. So the question I would have is, were those conditions part of the approval by the county commissioners? If so, then I think they should be made aware of this situation, this issue as well, because ultimately, they're the ones who have the authority. We don't always know if the conditions that we put on our recommendations are enacted by the commissioners. Sometimes they're not. Sometimes they add their own.
It's a great question. They were accepted your recommendations without change of any kind.
Okay, thank you.
Did this go in front of the Clackamas County Planning Commission? I don't recall it. I think this probably would have gone in front of hearings officer.
Yeah, that's correct. It was a conditional use permit, and it was the hearing, the land use hearings officer actually made the decision. So it did not come to you or to the board. The conditions, however, I mean, I don't have them memorized, but to the extent that it was a requirement that it be a eight foot or seven foot or whatever it was, then that condition would still be in place. There's been no modification made to the decision. I don't know exactly what's going on with the enforcement situation. We can certainly look into it and report back.
Mr. Leslie, I want to thank you for coming to give testimony and hope to hear from you again.
It's my pleasure, and I thank you for hearing me. I'll drop Darcy an email and ask if there's a way I can be kept informed on the progress of this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time. Thanks again for all that you do for the county.
Darcy, we have anyone else? Their hand up.
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Jennifer, should I take it away?
Yes, now you are ready for your, your ZDO two eighty-three script.
I really have to apologize. I was trying to be organized. Had a few distractions here.
That's okay, Mur. We should, we should merge them maybe instead of having the agenda or whatever. But yeah, you go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing is now open for consideration of ZDO two eight three, a legislative proposal to amend the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Development Ordinance. Assisting us in the hearing tonight are several members of the county staff, Principal Planner Martha Fritzi, Planning Director Jennifer Hughes, Administrative Specialist Darcy Renhart, and Ellen Rogan. The public hearing is being conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. Panelists for today's hearing, which include members of the planning commission and county staff, are both audio and video capability. If a panelist is participating with audio but not video, members of the audience will not see that panelist's name on the screen, but will be able to hear them when they speak. Audio, audience members who have joined the meeting will have their mics muted unless they wish to testify, in which case they will be called upon to do so by the county staff moderator. Audience members' video will not be turned on at any time. Today's hearing is being recorded as required by law. The county will make every effort to post the recording on the county website as soon as possible. The planning commission is charged with making recommendation on the application to the Board of County Commissioners. The record of this hearing will be forwarded to the board, which will make the final decision on the matter. The board will conduct another hearing on the application on July twelfth at ten a.m. That hearing will be de novo, meaning that the hearing will be started, a new and additional testimony may be offered. Tonight's hearing will not go beyond ten p.m. unless the majority of the planning commissioners in attendance vote to continue past that time. If not concluded, it will be, it will continue to a date and time certain. Their hearing may be continued for other reasons as well. If an announcement of an additional hearing date and time is made tonight, it will be the only notice given of the additional hearing. Conduct of the hearing. Conduct, conduct of the hearing. The public hearing will be conducted as follows. Planning and zoning division staff report. Entry into the record of any additional correspondence, technical information, testimony by representatives of recognized community planning organizations or hamlets. Maximum length, ten minutes per CPO or hamlet. Testimony by any other person, maximum length, three minutes per speaker. More as determined by chair. Closing of the public hearing, planning commission discussion. Testimony. There is a designated time during the hearing when it'll be open for testimony. The chair will make it clear when this is. If you want to provide testimony, you will utilize the raised hands feature in Zoom. Attendees on PC and IP pads, you have a raised hand button on the Zoom bar, top or bottom, depending on your device. Attendees by telephone, use star nine to activate the raise hand feature. When the moderator switches you over to provide testimony, you will, your screen will look different for a moment. Primarily, you will see all participants' cameras, not just the one who's speaking. Staff will call upon you. When it's time for you to provide testimony, for the record, please begin by stating your name, where you're from, and who you're representing. Once you have provided your testimony, your mic will be muted, and your screen will be returned to normal. The planning commission and zoning division staff will now present the staff report. Are there any questions from the planning commission? Take it away, Martha.
Oh, well, you're in for a treat today because I'm only, I'm only running the PowerPoint.
Okay.
We've decided I'm gonna talk to you. Yeah, I volunteered for some silly reason, and she took me up on it. So I'm a little out of practice at this, as you all know. It's been, it's been a few years, so we'll see how I do. We are here tonight for you to hear ZDO two eighty-three, file number ZDO two eighty-three, which is a package of legislative amendments to the county's comprehensive plan and zoning and development ordinance. And for members of the public, that just means we're going to talk about changing the law. And ultimately, what that means is that you make a recommendation to the board about that, and then the board will hold a subsequent hearing, and they ultimately make the decision on whether to change the county's code. We started a practice several years ago of trying to do these, what we call minor and time-sensitive amendments on an annual basis. That's the goal. We did miss last year. You had a policy session on this a year ago, but we had some staff changes, as the commission is well aware. And with Glenn Hamburg leaving, we slowed this down for a while, and so we're delayed a year. And Martha and I are trying to pick the ball up, and Glenn has very big shoes to fill, as you all know. So we are, we are doing our best. Minor and time-sensitive amendments are essentially intended to do three main things. Comply with mandates, which for us is usually something that state law is requiring us to do. Occasionally, it's something that Metro requires us to do. So really, we don't have choice about it. There's not a lot of policy debate. It's just something we must do, so we need to update our code. Second reason is to clarify existing language and correct errors. We find, you know, we have citations that are wrong, or we're using inconsistent terminology, or something should be moved because it's not easy to find where it is now. We've maybe issued a decision and had, and realized there was some lack of clarity, and so it's intended to be kind, it's housekeeping, but sometimes maybe it's just a little bit more than that. And then the third thing is to adopt optional provisions requiring minimal analysis. So there can be policy choices that are being made as part of these minor and time-sensitive amendment packages. But they're the kind of policy choices where staff doesn't need to, you know, form a technical advisory committee and spend a year going out to the public and do a lot of research and bring you, you know, a dozen different options. Some of our projects are much bigger and require that kind of outreach. These are intended to be things that we can do with just a little less work. So background on this, this was added to the long-range planning work program, this annual minor amendments package by the Board of County Commissioners. They do consider our work program. It used to be annually. Now it's every two years. And this package of amendments is on that adopted work program. As I mentioned, the planning commission did have a study session on this about a year ago, and the board had a policy session on it last July. We have received some community input that has led us to a couple of the items that you're going to consider tonight, where there's been a specific impact on someone of our code, and they've asked us to consider a change. We do have at least, I think there's maybe three of those tonight that we're pursuing, at least three for that, for that reason. And I'll try to highlight that when I'm discussing it. The proposal, in summary, there are five actions that staff has identified as being the most substantive. So this would fall kind of in maybe that third category where we're not legally required to make these changes. They're more than housekeeping, but we believe it can be done with, you know, minimal amount of analysis and outreach. The first one is to allow standalone restrooms in the rural tourist commercial zone. The rural tourist commercial zone, actually, Martha, I'm going to have more detailed slides on this, right? We're just summarizing. Okay, thanks. So the five things, allow standalone restaurants in a rural tourist commercial, align the forest template test dwelling requirements with state law, and I know there are some people here tonight to speak to that one. Align the non-conforming use discontinuance and implementation periods. Modify the zoning and development ordinance definition of lot of record. And streamline and clarify processes within habitat conservation areas and water quality resource areas. And I'm going to talk more in detail about all five of these, but those are the most substantive things we're doing or proposing to do tonight. Other actions, so these would fall more into the minor, like the number two or number one on that first slide about why we would be doing them. Exempt detached single-family dwellings, manufactured dwellings, and accessory uses from design review in commercial and industrial zones. Currently, I'm going to talk a little bit more about these because we're not, we don't have other slides devoted to these later in the presentation. Currently, our commercial industrial zones require designer review for all development, and it really doesn't parse out when it might not make sense. Designer view is to look at things like parking and building design and landscaping and all. And so there are some commercial districts that may allow a basic, what I would call a basic, single-family dwelling or manufactured home. And currently, in most cases, they're then required to go through designer view, which is, in my view, excessive. And so this proposal would exempt that. So they would go through a regular building permit process, but they wouldn't, and we'd be looking at things like setbacks and lot coverage and building height, but we wouldn't be putting them through designer view for a lot of standards that really don't have much applicability for single-family dwellings. Expressly allow electronic signatures. We're a little behind the times. We've had the question come up. We don't see any reason why we wouldn't accept an electronic signature, and so that will be added to the code if you, if this is ultimately approved by the board. Reduce the number of pages that are sent out with a notice of decision. Currently, when we mail a decision on a land use application, we are mailing out, in some cases, dozens of pages. And often, it's eight or ten or twelve pages. Stuffing large manila envelopes to hold that many pages and mailing them out to lots of people, most of which I would suspect end up recycled, because, you know, people maybe don't care that their neighbor is proposing to have a home business or, you know, temporary dwelling to care for a family member or something like that. And so this proposal would streamline that and save labor and materials by sending what is required by state law, which will be basically one sheet of paper that identifies the key things. Where's the property? What's the proposal? What's the decision? So people will still be able to understand what we did. They just won't get the entire decision with all of the findings. This one-page document will, however, refer them to where they can get a copy of the full decision, either by reaching out to the staff person or by going online and accessing our Acela program and being able to download the decision from there. So access will still be maintained, but it will, will save the county some resources. And then last, just this catch-all, make minor and non-substantive changes. There are just a bunch. They're all covered in those summaries. You have summaries for every section that we're proposing to change in your packet. The public can view those on our website. So there are a number of things where they're just really minor, but they do make a difference in terms of accuracy. So back to the, the five we've identified as most substantive. The first one is to allow standalone public restrooms in the RTC district as a conditional use. So RTC stands for Rural Tourist Commercial. We had, this was one where there was some community input. The, in particular, Community of Government Camp has been having some discussions. Those discussions have involved certain members of the Board of County Commissioners and a group called Oregon Solutions to talk about how they might fund something like this, ultimately, how the community might fund it, or what, you know, sorts of funding might be available. But one of the key issues that was identified is that the county zoning code doesn't clearly allow a standalone public restroom in this particular zone. And so sort of the first step is to enable that potentially, which would then allow, ultimately, if they do have a site and funding and et cetera, that they'd be able to file an application. So the proposal is to have that be a conditional use that allows for consideration of suitability of the subject property's surrounding area and applicable comp plan policies, so that's more than just coming in and getting a building permit. I think while we can all agree that public restrooms serve in a very important purpose, sometimes they might not be appropriate in a particular location, and a conditional use permit will allow those sort of potential impacts to be considered and the development to be, you know, conditioned potentially to be appropriate for where it's being proposed. They would also need to have consistency with existing design standards, so we would be still looking at things on the site in terms of if they're doing walkways and landscaping and all of those kinds of things. And a conditional use does require a public hearing, so there would be some input, automatic input from neighbors without having to file an appeal. The following slides show where the rural tourist commercial areas exist. They are the pink on each of these. I think there's three slides potentially that show these areas. They are all in the Mount Hood corridor. So commercial areas in Wemby Welch's, in Rota Dendron, in Government Camp, all have, all those are zoned RTC. So those are the areas that we're talking about where this use would then potentially be allowed. The second substantive change is to our, what we call template test standards. So the proposal is to align the county's requirements for forest template dwellings with the minimums that are required under state law. The criteria that we have currently have been in existence since the mid nineteen nineties. These standards apply on forest land, so in the county's timber zone, and then in some cases, in the ag forest zone. And dwellings are restricted in those zones. Not everyone can qualify. There are several mechanisms by which someone could qualify. One of them is this template test, which essentially looks at the density of development in a particular area. The county standards have been more restrictive since state law, than state law, since we adopted them in mid nineteen nineties. And the proposal here would, would sync ours up with state law. So more forest land properties will qualify for a dwelling, but we don't know how many. It's not possible for us to analyze at that level all of our timber properties in the county to know whether this is ten more dwellings or fifty more dwellings. We don't know. It is, however, consistent with the county's practice in recent years of conforming our code to state law in our natural resource zones. There are a number of restrictions in state law, a number of things that we have to allow, a number of things that we can't allow. There are certain areas where the county does have some authority to be more restrictive, and this is one area where previously we chose to do so. And now the thought is, maybe that's not appropriate, and we should sync ours up with state law. So this cute little animation here that somebody way more talented than I am put together shows you how a template test actually works. You place a template, which would be the green dashed line there, one hundred and sixty acre square. In most cases, it's one hundred and sixty acre square over the mathematical centroid of the property. And then you count within that. Well, at first, you decide they can, the applicant can rotate the template to the most advantageous position. But once it gets there, then it's fixed. They don't just keep, get to keep spinning it to try to pick up as many as they can. So it's fixed, and you count. So how many lots fall within that square? Not tax lots, but legal lots, which we're actually going to talk about in a minute for another reason, and how many dwellings? And dwellings that existed in nineteen ninety-three, which was basically when these rules came into effect for the, at the state level. And if you have enough, and depending upon your soil productivity, if you have enough lots and dwellings, then you too can qualify for a dwelling on your lot. There are certain lots, however, that are excluded and certain dwellings that are excluded. And that is what this is showing here with the eighty-plus acre, the, the yellow square. If a lot is eighty acres or more, it's excluded from being counted as falling within the template. And if that lot has a dwelling on it, those dwellings also don't count. And so that is an area where the county is more restrictive. So what would change? Within the template currently, you are required to have either four or five lots with dwellings, depending on how productive the soil is for growing trees. And those dwellings had to exist on January first of nineteen ninety-three. The proposal would be that just three such lots with dwellings are required to be located within the template. And then in addition, as I mentioned, lots over eighty acres and dwellings on lots over eighty acres are currently not counted, and the proposal is to count them. And for both of these, that will be consistent with the minimums required by state law. So moving on to number three, non-conforming uses. Non-conforming uses, I like that Glenn Hamburg used to call them legacy land uses, and I think that's a good way of putting it. They are legacy land uses. They are uses that were legal when they were established, and then the county's zoning regulations or state zoning regulations changed, and those uses would no longer be allowed to be established today. However, they are protected under state and county regulations. They can continue, and potentially, in some cases, they can be altered. There's a process for that. But if they discontinue for a period of time, then they cannot be reestablished. And local government has some flexibility to establish what that discontinuance period is. And in this case, our proposal, well, currently, our code has a discontinuance period of one year. And we are proposing to change that in part, well, there's a couple of reasons, but in part, it's to sync it up because we also have a standard for those alterations I mentioned. If you have a non-conforming use and you get approved to alter it, maybe you're going to do in addition to a grocery store that's in a, you know, zone that wouldn't currently allow a grocery store. You can be approved for that type of alteration, and our code says you, that alteration permit is good for four years. So you have four years to kind of get your plans together, submit your permits, and implement that alteration. Well, there's this odd disconnect now because that four-year implementation period was actually added later to our code without really thinking about what the effect was on the discontinuance, and that maybe in year two, three, and four, they would need to come back and re-justify that the use was still actually non-conforming, that it still hadn't been discontinued, which seems like a lot of paperwork for people. So that's the question. What if it's discontinued before it's implemented? And our answer is, let's sync those up. So we're going to propose that we meet in the middle. Increase the discontinuance period from one year to two years. Decrease the period during which they can implement the alteration from four years. Decrease the period during which they can implement the alteration from four years to two years. The other reason to do this is if you, in addition to sort of syncing this up, is to consider whether one year in some cases maybe isn't enough. I, I can think of a very specific circumstance where someone contacted the planning department because they had a use that had been closed during COVID. And I don't remember all the specifics. I don't know if it had to be closed, if it was an issue of closing for safety or whatnot, but potentially they were going to run afoul of this discontinuance provision because while one year might seem like a lot, it wasn't in that context. And so sometimes that, you know, makes us feel like, ah, maybe we kind of aren't giving everybody quite as much time. They may have a very legitimate reason for why the use stopped for a period of time. So the fourth item, and forgive me, I'm about to potentially get even more technical than I've just been with the first three. We are proposing to modify the ZDO definition of lot of record. So what's a lot of record? There are multiple ways to refer to what I'm going to call a unit of land. Let's call it that, a unit of land. You can have tax lots, which a lot of us are familiar with. If you get a property tax statement, that is coming to you based upon a particular tax lot. That is for assessment purposes. It is only for assessment purposes. It does not mean that that individual tax lot is necessarily separately developable under the zoning code or that it should be sold separately. It just means it's being taxed as a separate unit of land. There is something called a discrete parcel. I think that term discrete parcel comes out of case law. I don't know if potentially it used to be in the state law. It's not a term that's used anymore, but there is a particularly important case on units of land that uses the term discrete parcel. And it addresses the ability to sell something separately under land use regulations. So it just simply says, yes, this particular unit of land, you could sell it to someone else and you would not run afoul of zoning regulations. Does not necessarily mean it can be developed separately, which of course begs the question, why would you want to buy something separately that you can't develop? I mean, sometimes there are reasons. People just want to buy a piece of land because they want to buffer themselves from a neighbor or something. And so there could be some reason. They maybe just want to grow trees on it, which we would allow. They're not interested in building on it. So there could be a reason. But the third thing, the third type is a lot of record. And with a lot of record, you kind of get the whole suite of potential options for your property based upon how it's zoned, because it is considered to be a separate unit of land for development purposes under the county's zoning code. There are a lot of other counties that also have this concept of lot of record. I don't know for sure if all 35 of them besides us have that, but it is a fairly common term that's used in land use world. All of this of course creates lots of confusion for the general public who doesn't deal with all this technicality all the time. But for our purposes tonight, lot of record is what we're concerned about. This is our current definition, which goes on for days and I'm not going to read it all to you. But there are a couple of key provisions which have just been highlighted in yellow there that we are proposing to make some changes to address. This first, well, Martha, can you advance? I think maybe I want to. This is another like example. So the, the red, what's outlined in red there, you've got that large tax lot 18, 800, and then the little cutout, which you would think, oh gee, maybe those are separate. But with that little hook there, we know that in fact they go together as one lot of record, because that's just sort of a, a character we use to indicate that when we're doing our research. Same thing up above where you've got the green one and there are three separate lots there, you would think. And there are the little hooks that are connecting 600 and 602 and looks like, I guess, 200 altogether. So just to show you, this is a tax map where you've got separate tax lots, but in reality, you can't actually develop them all separately. Okay, go ahead Martha. Thanks. So the proposed definition does a couple of key things. Number one, we're proposing to restructure it for clarity. So instead of having kind of these paragraphs that go on and on to, you know, to put it more into a bulleted list, just so it's easier for people to read and reorganize it a little bit. We are proposing to remove the lot consolidation provision. And this is a big deal. I think there may be some people here tonight to testify on that. I'm not sure. The county has a standard that says if, when your property was first zoned, you had two, let's call them discrete parcels. So they were separately sellable. They were like on separate deeds. But you own them both at first zoning. And one or both of them did not meet the minimum lot size when first zoning went into effect, then they were considered to be consolidated as one lot of record for development purposes. So we say it a lot, maybe the first zoning was five acre minimum. And somebody had a three acre piece and another three acre piece and they were separately needed. And they assumed that they would be able to be developed separately moving forward. But they were both owned by Jennifer Hughes. And the five acre minimum came into effect ever since then, they have considered, they've been considered to be combined for development purposes. This creates a lot of complexity. Well, first off, I should say it's not required by state law that we do it that way. I've been told, but have not verified, but let's call it from a somewhat likely to be an accurate source, that we are very rare in the world of counties that we have that standard. It's not particularly common. I do not have the background as to why the county chose to go that route, but we're not required to have that standard. It does increase when we are researching properties and trying to determine whether something is a lot of record, which happens a lot, even all these decades after zoning took effect, we still are doing a lot of research on lot of record. It increases the complexity of that. It makes it take longer. It makes it harder for us to figure out because we have to pull all the ownership information for all the surrounding parcels, which sometimes goes into, occasionally goes into another county and requires us to pull records from there to figure out whether this undersized, but in the same ownership issue applied. So partly we do, we want to do this to reduce complexity because it is costing a lot of time and money for us to do this research. There's potentially a fairness question. I mean, I suppose you could say that about any zoning regulation. But you could have a case where I owned the two three acre lots I mentioned, the five acre zoning comes into effect. I now have to combine those. However, let's say Martha Fritzi owned a three acre lot and Martha's husband owned the lot next door, but it was in his name and this was in her name. They're not, then they're separate. Or one was owned by Martha and her husband and one was owned just by Martha. They're separate. So, you know, there's a lot of permutations of how people own land that can then have some very disparate impacts in terms of whether they're considered separate or not. So that's another policy reason why we want to, might want to make this change. I mentioned consistency with other jurisdictions and that's true, state required minimum lot size requirement. So we also are proposing to sunset the foreclosure provision. We have something in our definition of lot of record right now that says if a mortgage foreclosure happens, that the lot becomes legal. Doesn't appear that that's consistent with state law. Where we, I've looked and I can't find the legislative history for why the county did that. It was added to the code in the 80s. There's no background in the file that explains to me why. We've had our legal counsel look to see. We can't find any justification for it. We certainly know of other jurisdictions who explicitly say that foreclosure does not create a lot of record. And we're concerned that in effect, we are in violation of state required minimum lot sizes in the farm and forest zones by having that provision in our code. So the proposal is not to retroactively go back and take that away from people who we granted it to in the past, but to sunset it with the date that these rules take effect. Uh, technical corrections needed to the draft definition. So the other issue is that we treat platted lots as lots of record. So if something was subdivided or partitioned and the plat was recorded, we have always treated those as lots of record. But the way the definition is written, it's a little bit backwards how we get to that conclusion. And so the proposal is to make that more clear. What I do need to tell you is that I spent some time with the definition today. And as I mentioned, Martha and I kind of picked this up. And so I really didn't have a time, time to really sit down and digest the exact draft that we had in the record until today. And it's clear to me that inadvertently it does more than what we intended it to do. I think that the way it's drafted, particularly with some provisions where we're singling out certain dates where the county adopted some regulations in the past, that we're going to potentially in some ways loosen things up unintentionally and in some ways potentially make it more restrictive unintentionally. So what we're going to be recommending tonight at the end of this is that you recommend that staff make some technical corrections to the draft before it goes to the board so that it will clearly do just three things. It will, I have to remember what they are now. It will sunset the foreclosure provision. It will remove the lot consolidation requirement. It will clearly state that platted subdivision and partition lots are lots of record. And it will essentially format the whole definition so that it's just easier to read. And hopefully that will help both our staff and the public. The rest of it, we would propose to not change. And maybe at some point we will come back at it, you know, for a second attempt. But I think right now I'm concerned that if we leave the rest of it in there, we're going to do some things we didn't need to do. And the fifth and final substantive change we are proposing is to our habitat conservation area and water areas and water quality resource areas overlay zones. So these are overlay districts that apply for wetlands and streams that have been identified as either water quality features or significant habitat. They apply inside the metro service district boundary. And there is quite a complex set of regulations that apply if you are developing a site that has one of these overlay zones on it. What we are attempting to do is streamline the process without any substantive changes to the requirements, with one possible exception where there's a little substance to it. So first off, we're proposing to eliminate the construction management plan requirement where it has to be a separate application. Instead of making people pay us several hundred dollars and us then writing a decision, which frankly is fairly cut and dried what they have to do, that would just simply be done at the time of either a development permit, because sometimes they need a development permit if they're actually building in one of these areas, not just on the same site as one of these areas or with a building permit. So if they're building not inside the habitat area, but near it, they are required to do one of these construction management plans. And we will just apply those standards at the building permit stage instead of requiring a separate application. The construction management plan is currently a type one application. It doesn't require notice. So it's not really changing anything as far as public involvement, but it will streamline the process for both staff and the customer. We are suggesting that for habitat conservation area map verification, that's another step that applicants have to go through in some cases where they have to verify where the boundary of this area is. There are several different ways to do map verification. One of them is you just say, hey, I agree with the county's map. Well, oddly, it's currently required that they actually go through an application process to tell us they agree with our map, which does not make very much sense. The map has already been adopted. There isn't really anything discretionary. They just say, I like your map. And we say, okay, that's great. We do too. And then we move on. So there's really no point in having a separate application for that. So this would remove that requirement. There are still ways that people can sort of challenge our map and those would remain in effect and those, those do require an application. The third thing is to add clear and objectives, a clear and objective standards option for development within these areas. So we're actually required for housing to have clear and objective standards. And so this does dovetail nicely with the fact that we need to be doing that. Currently, there are some situations related to development in these areas where there isn't a clear and objective option. We have a clear and objective process. It applies in a lot of cases, but there's sort of a narrow area where people don't, aren't able to take advantage of that. And this will correct that. It will say, okay, you too can opt into this clear and objective pathway as opposed to the discretionary pathway. The discretionary pathway still remains available. So a developer can still say, nope, I don't like your, do it this way. I've got a different, more flexible option I'd like to pursue. That's still available. And then this is a little bit more of a technical correction. We are proposing to allow restricted development areas instead of tracts when somebody is doing a land division. Currently, they have to do a tract in some cases and it, in, as opposed to putting basically just a restriction on the plat that says there's no development allowed within this area. They're actually required to plant it into a separate tract and then potentially have like the homeowners association own that tract. In particular, this has caused some problems in rural zoning because there is some rural zoning that is within the metro boundary. And it creates a conflict with minimum lot size requirements in some of our rural areas when they have to put things into this tract. So that's one of the main reasons that we want to free up this option to do an RDA instead. So you have a staff report where Martha has done an admirable job of explaining how all of these regulation changes that we're proposing comply with the statewide planning goals, Oregon revised statutes, chapter 92.010 and 215.010, the Metro Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, our own comprehensive plan, and the procedural requirements of the zoning and development ordinance for the adoption of legislative amendments. It is staff's recommendation that the planning commission recommend to the Board of County Commissioners adoption of the ZDO. I think that should be 283 text amendments included in attachment A. And with the changes that I mentioned to the draft definition of lot of record, so essentially that staff will amend that definition to only do the things that we've explicitly talked about tonight and not to inadvertently do more than what we have explained and advertised. And with that, I will take questions. And I can't imagine there are any after that, right? Because it was all crystal clear exactly what we're doing.
We need, we need to do questions of what you spoke to and then testimony. Is that right? Okay.
That's normally if you've got, yeah, I mean, what we want to do is answer any content questions you have or questions about why we're proposing what we're proposing. What we don't want is to get into any kind of deliberation at this point about what you think about any of it. Just clarifying questions.
I'd like to welcome Kevin Moss, Commissioner Moss. Thank you for getting here. Any questions from anybody?
I have a question.
Carrie.
From on the Habitat Conservation Area District. I just want a couple of questions. One is, what is an example of clear and objective standards that you?
Um, so an example of a clear and objective standard is where in the Habitat Conservation Area in particular, the standard is a certain disturbance area and it is based, I'm not going to be able to quote all these off the top of my head, but I could look them up if you want me to. But it's, for example, if you have high value habitat conservation area, you're allowed to disturb a maximum of 5,000 square feet. And then it says, it also, it's more than that. It also says, oh, and by the way, that disturbance area needs to first be located outside the habitat area. And then you get to go into the habitat conservation area if you don't have 5,000 square feet out. So that would be an example of, I think that's actually an accurate run. I can double check the, the number, but it's, it's like that. As opposed to a more discretionary, look at alternatives, maybe different development practices to limit your impacts. Where it's, it's more, we might be able to improve it if you make a good case, but, and then therefore you might be able to disturb more or it might be able to be in a different location. Maybe you come in and you say, well, it's really all nice that you think I can do 5,000 square feet outside, but the reality is I've got it like all the way around the edge and no way to get to it. That kind of thing would allow them to do a discretionary.
Okay. And, and when there is disturbance, are there mitigation required for those disturbance?
Okay, yes.
And on the tract issue, I, I'd like to understand a little bit more about how the density or buildable area calculation change. Because the reason I bring this up is because I've seen a lot of resource areas that didn't get put into a tract. And property owners purchase thinking it is buildable and only to come to find out that they can't. And obviously they would be upset about that. So I, I don't know, you mentioned that if it's put in a tract, it has issues with buildable area calculation. So if you can explain that a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So generally you're only going to see in a urban zone, we allow for density transfer. And those standards are very flexible in terms of allowing whether, you know, somebody can do a planned unit development and use it as one of their open space tracts. They can flex their lot sizes without doing a planned unit development. They can't go quite as small as they can with a PUD, but we allow quite a bit of flexibility as long as your average lot size is consistent with whatever the zone is. And you get to factor in those, those common areas. And you get to factor in those, those common areas or open spaces or protected tracks. So in an urban area, I don't really think it would. It's a problem from, from that standpoint to have a, a tract requirement. In the rural areas, we have state law requires an, an absolute floor of two acres. In rural, what we call exception lands. And so in some cases you can, it has created a conflict where they've got enough habitat. And it's, we're saying, hey, you have to put that in a separate tract, which doesn't count toward the size of any of your lots. And as a result, they're going to potentially lose, you know, a building site, just not be able to make their development work because of that. Whereas you could do the exact same thing. Essentially you would still be, I mean, it's, it's a technicality. But because it would just be a restricted development area on the property. It wouldn't run afoul of those lot size standards. That's the most obvious example I can think of. I can't swear it's, if, that it hasn't come up in some other context, but that's.
So how do you, then how, in, in your example, if the lot is. I don't know, five acres. And two of the, those acres are in resource area. And so now if it was in a tract, you would only have three acres to develop in. But with the five acres as a whole, you still, you are able to develop in five acres? Is that how that works? I mean, how do you, how do you protect the resource area if you're not putting it in a trap?
Right. Yeah. So I think that's the, and that's the policy question. I mean, the, the planning commission certainly may feel like it's not protective enough to not have it in a tract and that's legitimate feedback. I think. You know, the, the beauty of a tract, I guess, is that then each individual property owner theoretically knows it's not theirs, right? It's either, there are, I think the code allows for either. You can dedicate it to the public. That almost never happens because mostly the parks district or whoever isn't going to want to take these little pieces and have responsibility for that. So that would be very rare that that would ever work. They can convey it to some sort of conservation nonprofit land conservation group. Again, we rarely see that, but potentially I have somebody like the Wetlands Conservancy or, you know, something that could theoretically. Uh, own it. And then the third option is. That it goes into a tract to be owned by the homeowners association. So then you have to. They have to create a homeowners association, which in theory sounds great, but I've been doing this long enough to realize what happens. That homeowners associations become defunct. Nobody takes care of the property. People's yards start creeping out into the, I mean, we see this all the time. It gets foreclosed upon. I mean, you know, all kinds of things can happen with those things. And so my sense is it's not as protective as I would. As one would like it to be. So I guess from that perspective, I'm not convinced that an RDA is going to be worse than what's happening with tracts.
So tell me what RDA is. I'm sorry, I should.
Sure. It's, yeah, Martha, go ahead.
Can I share a picture? Of an, uh, that might help?
You can, as far as I'm concerned.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Can you see that?
No.
Oh wait, sorry.
There we go.
No, that's.
It's coming. Yeah, there you go.
Can you see the subdivision and then the restricted development area up here?
Yeah. Oh, that's what RDA is.
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
So no development is allowed on this whole portion of this person's lot who, who owns lot number eight, but their actual lot is this size.
Okay. And so if you, so what we're talking about is essentially still having that. RDA. But.
Yes.
But the, uh, it wouldn't be in a track.
Correct.
And.
Yes.
Are, what kind of restrictions are there? Where are the RDA restrictions identified in the code?
So it's just going to be a blanket prohibition on development, which is what the code says. Development's prohibited and then except, and there's a provision that comes out of the model code for metro that allows for stormwater conveyance. Through those tracts, I believe how it's worded. But otherwise it's, it's just, they can't do anything. I mean, you could, you know, obviously somebody could do some sort of like mitigation, revegetation or move invasives. You know, something good like that, but they can't use it for decks, driveways, storage sheds, house, you know, the house, none of that. And so we would be regulating at this building permit stage. Um, and then beyond that, it's a code enforcement thing, you know, if it's something that they just do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Louise, go ahead.
Yeah, mine is regarding the forest template, the dwelling, the situation. I wondered what the history was behind both the not allowing the eighty acre lots. In the counting of lots in the template area as well as why. In the again, historical, why Clackamas County chose to go more restrictive than state law. So kind of a two-part question.
I don't know. And I'm trying to remember, I, I do know that Glenn, when he was working for us, went and tried to find the answer to that. And my recollection is there wasn't a lot. I mean, I may be wrong, but my recollection is there wasn't a lot of background. In that particular file, which did a whole bunch of other, you know, wasn't just dealing with that. Issue. And so sometimes it's hard to find a lot of legislative history if they're adopting a whole section of the code, you know. Uh, so I don't know, but I would say from a, if I had to hypothesize that the intention was to restrict. You know, to, to allow fewer dwellings than could otherwise be achieved. That's the only thing that makes any sense to me. Is that there was a feeling that it should be harder to build a dwelling on those lands than what the state minimums required.
And so to me, it's a little odd, but they picked out the, the lots of eighty acres and bigger to exclude those as part of the. Restricting more development.
Yeah, I mean, the minimum lot size in, so nothing's ever hard and fast, but the minimum lot size in almost every case. In the forest zones is eighty acres now. And that was a new standard that was adopted at the state level at the same time as all this template test dwelling stuff was being adopted. So I imagine there was some thought that it was syncing up with this idea that, well, if these parcels are eighty acres or more. Those are commercial forest lands. They should be considered commercial forest lands. They really shouldn't count toward, I mean, that's kind of my thought of what the philosophy probably was, but I'm just speculating.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I would like to make a comment about. Forest template dwellings in our workshop that we had three hundred and sixty-four days ago. On June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, we had a fairly heated discussion over. Forest template dwellings, as I remember, I think we had something like seven, sixteen or seventeen. Amendments that we were looking at to review within that workshop. The planning commission, uh, pretty much approved all but the forest template dwellings. Opening up land for more development was not very popular and I could understand that. Uh, right now I'm. Taking part in the neighborhood, the mounted corridors, neighborhoods, wildfire reduction. And preparation that CPOs, uh, H, HOAs are putting together. And this is from Timberline Lodge on down to Sandy. We're trying to come up with a way to try and reduce our vulnerability to wildfire. And, but you know, uh, at another step above that, we have agencies that come in after our meeting and have a fire wise program. And that includes Portland General Electric. Now, if we start opening up timberlands again. Or to more development, we're running more power lines, we're running more fire hazards, we're hardening our forest. I really think we need to seriously consider that. I'm very open to all testimony. Again, listening is the ability or having the will to change your mind. And that's what I'm looking forward to, but yeah. Any other commissioners have any thought on that? Shall we move on?
Oops, Murph, you're muted.
Have we received any correspondence on the matter other than those included in the meeting package?
No.
And I do see we had Glenn had some input on some matter.
Yes, Glenn, Glenn from his seat at Metro got to take a look at these regulations. Martha and I laughed. Glenn thinks Glenn's amendments are really good. So. I'm just teasing, of course, we've, we've reworked a lot of them and whatnot, but yeah, he did submit something that found they were consistent with the functional plan at Metro.
Are there any other government agencies here to provide technical information related to this proposal? Please use the raise hand feature if you're in the audience and wish to testify on behalf of a government agency. Darcy, is there anybody in the audience? Nope. Okay. Are there any questions from the commission? Public testimony. Are there any representatives of community planning organizations or hamlets here?
Sorry, I didn't unmute myself quickly enough. Can I ask a quick question? Again, back at the RDA. I'm so sorry. Is, is there a way to demarc? Make some kind of demarcation of the dash line that you showed in a map, Martha? So that people know where it is when they purchase the property? Or is that just available during the title search type of a scenario? I, I'm just worried that if people don't know. They would encroach in the area without some form of demarcation. And, um, you know, taking care of things after it happens is a lot more difficult than not ruining things to begin with. So I'm just wondering, I understand that there's restrictiveness associated with the area for development. But how do you know the Joe Blow, you know, citizen that you're not supposed to be doing things out there?
Well, there's no way to. Put a, a line or any indication on the ground. But it does show, uh, it would show up in the title search. It's, there's, um, it'll show up on a plat. And there will be notes on the plat that it's a restricted development area and it'll show up on the tax map that we're just looking at, um, an example of. But it's, I mean, visually on the ground, um, there, there would not be a line or any sort of mark. I mean, that's really no different than if you had a tract of open land behind you. There's not an actual, unless you put, had put your own fence up, there's not any sort of line marking that separate.
Yeah, I, I understand that. And I, I just, um, I've experienced any. Violations, the areas, people thinking that it's their land and they should be, it's their lot, they should be able to do whatever they want. So I'm just looking for ways to keep it from going bad because again, um, once things are bad, it's really, really hard to make it better. And it's costly on everyone's part to make things back to its normal state. I mean, the, you know, the, um, power line, the way I'm, the, um. People with utilities where they have little marks that they put. At the, um, edge of where their pipeline is running so that people don't, um, put, um, you know, accidentally. Dig it up and, and whatnot. I mean, there are some markers that you can make. Um, in these areas. And I'm just wondering if with the development. As a condition of development is to put enough markers within that subdivision so that you can, it's obviously not going to be, you're not going to be able to draw a line. But if you can kind of make people aware of, um, the existence of the natural area. That might, um, be helpful in keeping out of there. So. And I, you know, maybe that's part of the conditions approval process that the county goes through and maybe it's not, doesn't belong in the, in the ZDO. I don't know. I just am. I'm very concerned about inadvertent. Encroachment into areas where people shouldn't be messing with, so.
So, um, one comment, uh, we actually as part of, and I should have thought of this sooner in this discussion, but. The construction management plan that I mentioned where it's not going to be a separate application anymore if this passes, but the standards are the same. So those standards are going to get applied to a subdivision application, which actually means they will have to mark the RDA. Because they have to not store their construction equipment there or their lumber or their, and so there actually is a requirement. Now, that doesn't have to exist in perpetuity, but it has to exist during the construction phase. So there will be. There will be some protection while they're building the subdivision infrastructure and then during the building of the homes. So hopefully that will assist and, because I, I think you're right. These things do happen and we're hopefully going to stop that from happening.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
And just to comment on that, I, uh, Carrie, I had seen, uh, in a project, restoration project that we had. Here at the Confluence of the Salmon and the Sandy and had, uh, BLM, Clackamas County and City of Portland owned. Properties here. City of Portland went and identified, uh, their right of ways or their, uh. Yeah, their right of ways basically, uh, with their own fiberglass site poles. To say this is, you know, basically a habitat conservation area or a water quality area. And you are not to take any trees out of it. But then again, I also have a, a comment, uh, when there is a sediment and erosion. Uh, plan that's, uh, produced for this area, that would identify that area. Am I correct?
Yes, that's part of that construction management plan.
Yes, exactly. Anybody else? Okay, I guess moving on to testimony.
So I think you've called for CPOs and then we had an interruption. So, um, I think that's where we are, that if somebody's with a CPO, they need to raise their hand.
Okay, we're at CPOs. Darcy, do we have any CPOs to raise their hand?
Um, I have two hands raised. I'm not sure if they're with CPOs or not. They've had their hands up for a while. But first I have, go ahead.
I was, the second one is not a CPO. The first one I don't know.
Okay, so first up we have Marvin.
Yes, Marvin is my husband. He has the phone, but I am the vice chair of the Highland Clark's. Hamlet, uh, sorry, CPO. And regarding the forest template dwelling, we've discussed it with our neighbors and our community. And we are in full support of bringing that up to state standard. Yes, and we've written a letter to the county as well in support of that. I don't know if it's still there. Craig left, Russ, I'm sorry, nervous Craig Ruthledge. Wrote that letter.
I don't, have we seen that, Martha?
I feel like we did, but let me, I'm looking right now.
Okay, great.
Going, I'll let you know.
Yeah, where you were located?
Say again, in Clark.
Where, what's your regret, or not address, but what, uh, area are you located in?
We're, we're in, uh, the Hamlet of Beaver Creek.
Oh, you're in Beaver Creek, okay.
We are. And as far as fire, um, many of our, uh, neighbors here were hit by the fire. So we are aware of, we are aware. Of the dangers. Well, some, some of the neighbors would, would be clearing, you know. Underbrush, under their trees to help prevent that. I think homeowners, you know, they want to protect their land too, you know, it is, they do live in a forest.
Um, so I have not received a letter. The only one that I have is from Ann and Jason Del, Delphel, who I think are the next two to potentially testify.
Wrote this letter last year.
So, um, I've only received letters of testimony since we sent out notice. If you could forward that to me, I'd be happy to add it to the record. It will most certainly go to the Board of County Commissioners, um, for the next hearing.
Okay, thank you.
And I can put my email address in the chat. Can they see the chat? Can the attendees see the chat? They can't?
I could, I could look you up, um, Martha on the website.
And it's on the notice as well.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Is there a second one?
There's no other CPO. But don't believe. I think we're probably moving to regular testimony, at least based on the names. But if I turn out to be wrong, we'll give them their full time regardless, so.
Okay, so we're past CPOs. Does any person wish to speak on this proposal? Each person will have three minutes to testify. Please use the raise hand feature. Is there anyone in the audience who has raised their hand?
I have Ann and Jason Delpho.
Hello, my name is Ann Delphel and my husband is here with me, Jason. As far as the CPO, I'm actually a director on the Clark's Highland CPO as well. Tracy is the vice chair. We've been involved with the Clark's Highland CPO for the last for the last year, maybe a year and a half. So I am definitely in support of the forest template, the eighty plus acres amendment to include that. My husband and I, we, we bought a property of twenty acres in the Clark's Highland area. I can give you the exact address if you'd like. We bought it approximately six years ago. We wanted to set a small manufactured home on the site where a previous owner had intended to build. The property had been approved for a dwelling in two thousand and one. And the previous owner had electricity brought into power the well that was drilled and built a wellhouse to store the tank. They also had a pole barn built. In two thousand and sixteen, it was sold to us as buildable and was confirmed prior to sale by Clackamas County using the method for the dwelling test. What happened is they came in and they put the plexiglass over and said, yeah, nothing seems to have changed. It should still be buildable. Let's see, so we didn't, so we, we bought the property. We didn't renew the application right away as we still had two children in school and wanted them to graduate in the school district we presently within. In two thousand and twenty, we applied for a forest template to test dwelling and met all the requirements except being forty feet shy of the eleventh property needed for the set criteria. So our application was denied. At this time, the planning department was using GIS to determine property lines. And we were told it is more accurate than the old method. After we appealed the decision and again were denied, Melissa Lord, planner assigned to our dwelling application, informed me that a change in language is in the works to align the ZVO ordinances in Clackamas County with state ordinances. The one in particular included that tax lots of record over eighty acres could be included for the eleventh eleven tax lots required to qualify for the forest template dwelling approval. There are two such tax lots within the hundred and sixty acre template test area for our application. The draft for the ZVO two eighty-three allows acreage over eighty to be included for the criteria to qualify for a dwelling, which will help us with the approval we need. So I know that Gerald had some concern about, you know, having more buildings and/or homes in the, the forest area. Our, our place where our property is surrounded already by properties that have homes on them. There, you know, one was an old Christmas tree farm. I think the one behind us is they do, they do select cut. They have trees that, you know, that they grow and they do select cut. So it's a pretty mature forest. There's also another one to the south of us called, it's called the conservancy, but I know there's another name for it. And that's over eighty acres as well. So we do have a lot of people that are around us that have already built property and some I think one of the properties was an old Christmas tree farm. And they've, they've switched to doing, growing straw or hay or something like that. But it's not really going to affect you know, as far as the forest lands surrounding. So that, that is my testimony and I'm hoping that this amendment does go forward because that would help us greatly to be able to build on our property. Thank you for your time.
Next I have Sarah Mitchell.
You calling Sarah Mitchell? Sorry, the icon sent for me to unclick my mute.
Got it. I think I've got it now. Can everyone hear me? Excellent, but you can't see me still. All right, well, good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Mitchell. I'm an attorney with the Carrington Law Group. Our address is CO Box two two zero nine, Lake Oswego, nine seven zero three five. And I'm here today not on behalf of any particular client, but for the good of the order, so to speak. Land use practitioners like myself and landowners are often frustrated by non-conforming use provisions that are adopted by local governments. They can be unclear, confusing, and their application very often lead to litigation, which I know no one enjoys. So that's what I wanted to focus my comments on today are the amendments to your non-conforming use provisions in your code. So as a little bit of background, the county's non-conforming use provisions stem from state law and that's ORS two fifteen one thirty that says non-conforming uses are allowed to continue. And the statute goes on to say that such non-conforming uses can't be resumed after a period of interruption or abandonment unless the resumed use conforms to the current code, which many oftentimes means that the use can't continue at all. And then the statute authorizes local governments to establish criteria to determine when a use interrupted or abandoned. And the county has done that. They've got with some criteria, but they only state that if a non-conforming use is discontinued for more than twelve months or a year, the use can't be resumed. But the code doesn't define discontinuance or otherwise provide really any guidance as to what that means. And the twelve months is also a super short time period and can be quite harsh when considering events that are out of a property owner's control. And Jennifer took my COVID example earlier, but if a non-conforming restaurant was forced to shut down during COVID for more than a year and then attempted to resume the business after restrictions were lifted, under the county's current rules, it wouldn't be allowed to resume. And that would be forcing what the county is called legacy business to close and taking that income out of the local economy. And the current code also doesn't take into account situations where a non-conforming use owner has to shut down their use or parts of it in order to develop any approved changes, which the county's code calls alterations to a non-conforming use that require county review and approval, which can also take quite a long time. As Jennifer explained earlier too, currently the county's code gives applicants four years to implement an approved alteration, but it's unclear whether that approved alteration tolls the time for discontinuance, whether it stops the clock, so to speak, or whether the non-conforming use can still be threatened by discontinuance when the applicant has shut down the use or parts of it in order to then implement and develop the approved alteration. And the proposed amendments recognize these harsh realities and attempt to fix, which is admirable. We certainly appreciate all the county's hard work. Amendments are difficult. So what they do is extend discontinuance to twenty-four months or two years, then also shorten the implementation period for an alteration to two years. But the changes don't exactly hit the nail on the head. Essentially, there's still ambiguity in how those two provisions interact. So implementing an approved alteration requires that all building permits be obtained. But what if those building permits are obtained within that time period, which itself takes a long time in my experience. But the applicant doesn't then have time to construct them and resume the use before the two years for discontinuance run out. So it seems to me especially harsh to shut down a non-conforming use for discontinuance that has gone through the trouble of jumping all the hoops to verify the non-conforming use and implement the alteration by obtaining their building permits, but then still doesn't have enough time to actually construct the changes that was approved to make and then resume the use. So what I'd like to do is to propose adding a provision to the amendments that says something along the lines of the period for discontinuance is told when an applicant.
Harrison, we're almost at five minutes. Could you please?
Okay, I'd just like to say that I'd like to add the period of discontinuance is told where, where an applicant submits an application for an alteration of a non-conforming use and during the approval period of the alteration. So those are the changes that I'd like to see made. I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming. Darcy, we have one more, it looks like.
I have Liesl Harrison.
Hey, actually, it's David Harrison. Liesl's my wife. She manages the, the computer stuff here. So, yeah, David Harrison, I grew up in Sandy, Oregon, out on Harrison Farms. Murphy, you've been out there a few times. Thank you for, for putting out the trees.
I saw you recently.
That's right, that's right.
It is still green.
Still green, nice. All right. Prepared just a little something to read. I'm hoping I can stay under five minutes. Here we go. So I grew up on a Christmas tree farm in Sandy and from about ten years old, I've worked on my, on the farm with my folks, Roger and Kathleen Harrison and my brothers and sisters and some close family friends. And we've made a pretty good go of the farm out in Sandy. So the location of this property on what became Harrison Farms connects Highway twenty-six to Coleman Road over, over Cedar Creek. Most of the property was gifted to my folks from my grandparents. Wayne Knapp was a logger in the forties and fifties and he owned Skyline Logging. And at the time when it was gifted to my folks, Louise, to your question earlier about the eighty acre problem, there was a time when TBR was actually zoned GTD eighty for a while, and I think that was the connection to the connect the eighty acres and count them or not count them. But anyways, GTD eighty got switched to TT twenty and then TBR. So to make the farm, we had to purchase an extra forty acres and then apply for the county approval of a replacement dwelling for an old shack that was, that was down on Coleman Road that a guy had just been squatting in. But anyways, there's two hundred acres total and so far we've only had the approval to build one dwelling on this two hundred acres. So, uh, three years ago, my wife and I and our two girls started the process of applying for a second dwelling on the farmstead. And with my folks getting older and the commute from, I live out here in Fairview, the commute out to the farm is getting more expensive. It made sense to move out of the city. So we thought that we had multiple lots there, multiple lots of record on the farm. We had a tax lot one hundred, two hundred and four hundred. Back in the nineties, when my folks split it up, it became tax lot one oh one, nineteen hundred, seventeen hundred and two hundred. I don't know if that's important for the story today, but this, uh, this lot line adjustment and replat at the time in the nineties comes into being problematic now in two thousand and twenty-three. So we believed that there were multiple lots on the farm. So we picked one with the best view and most convenient place to have the least amount of impact down near Cedar Creek and the least amount of impact on the farm and started our application with the county to to do the forest dwelling permit that we've been talking about. We found out after multiple communications with the county and with our legal help that when they filed the plats back in nineteen ninety-three, they did it by, by deed is how they changed the, the lot lines. And on the current zoning restrictions, lot line adjustments by deed, no, do not create new lots of record. And I agree with the new, the new amendments that you're doing now to change that idea so that the lot line adjustments that were done back in nineteen ninety-three would now create new lots of record for us and potentially make the tax lot one hundred a buildable slash developable lot for a second home on the farm. I wish this would have happened two years ago because I'm about ten grand deep in lawyer's fees trying to figure out all that research that we had to do all the way back into the fifties on, on previous previous deeds recorded on the microfiche at Clackamas County. But I'm glad that we're moving ahead with it now. So I know that my situation's a little bit convoluted, but I'm glad that Clackamas County is now moving to change their legal definition of lot of record to reflect the consistency with the rest of the counties in the state of Oregon. I, I don't know, for what it's worth, I approve ZDR two eight three. And I, I agree with you guys in this, changing the definitions of lot of record and how that you now find the forest dwelling permit regulations.
Any planning commissioners have questions for David? David, your testimony is valuable. So thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
So do we. Thank you. Okay, so are we going to close testimony now?
I don't see any other hands up. There are a number of other people in the audience, so maybe just one final call. Is there anyone else who wants to testify on ZVO two eighty-three? I don't see any hands, Chair Murphy.
I move to close the hearing.
I'll second that.
Is now closed. Are there any further questions that staff has from the planning commission? Of staff, I should excuse, excuse me. Any questions out staff from the planning commission? Louise?
Yeah, just a point of clarification on zoning. Just from my own experience, when I purchased my acreage, which was, is a little shy of the eighty acres, it was in a GTD forty, which was a general timber district forty, I believe. And then later it was changed to the TBR eighty. The fellow who was testifying, who has the Christmas tree farm in Sandy, mentioned a GTD eighty. I just want to clarify, we're, we're both, were they both a GTD forty and a GTD eighty, eighty and they both became the TBR eighty?
No, but I think we can cut Mr. Harrison some slack. It's really hard to keep track of all the various acronyms and what they've, and what they've meant over the years, but but Commissioner Loeb, you're correct. There was a GTD forty. There was a GT forty, and I've actually read those sections and I can't even figure out what the difference was between the two. There was, one of them was like, kind of like this legacy zone that they froze, but I can't, I don't know what the difference was between that anyway. And then there was TT twenty. So all three of those zones existed. And then they became mostly TBR, which has an eighty acre minimum and some ag forest, which also has an eighty acre minimum, but, but allows more of the uses that are allowed in the exclusive farm use zone than the timber zone does. So we had three forest zones. We went to two. And there, the eighty acre minimum came about in the early nineties when we adopted those two new zones.
Okay, because the TT twenty was a transitional timber twenty. I'm not sure what it was transitioning from or to, but that was its name.
I have no idea. I have no idea.
Well, thank you for the clarification.
Jerry?
Um, I just wanted to ask staff about the co- that comment that was made about the nonconforming use um, timeframe. Is that something you can address, please?
Yes, um, I, I do think that, um, Sarah Mitchell has a good point. Um, I don't know that I'm prepared to draft code for you sitting here in this meeting. That doesn't tend to ever go well. So I guess I would say a couple of things if, um, Sarah, if you would email Martha Fritzy, um, your suggested language, that would be helpful. And, uh, we can certainly submit whatever you have into the record for the Board of County Commissioners and I'll give staff a little time to think about it. I think, um, the idea of having a sort of pause or a toll of the discontinuance clock makes some sense. I'm not comfortable with it being completely open ended because sometimes frankly, these things can drag on for years. You know, you get the building permit and then it's like we have an inspection every six months into forever trying to get something done. And then really the use has stopped for a long time. So I think if the commission were interested in saying, well, you get, you know, like you get your two years to your as part of an alteration, what we do first is we verify that there is still a nonconforming use. So we're making that finding that it hasn't discontinued for more than, right now it's 12 months. If this passes, it would be 24. And then as part of that, then they say, and I want to alter it, and they have to demonstrate that it won't create greater adverse impacts on the neighborhood than the use that we've just verified. So we go through all of that and then we say, okay, you have two years to implement and Sarah's correct. It it implementation means you have to get your permits. It doesn't mean you have to be done. So maybe we have some reasonable, like if you, if you meet the implementation standard with, you know, by the time that you're, you're supposed to, then we give you another two years or year or whatever the commission thinks is appropriate to actually build whatever it was, assuming that you actually have to stop your use to do it. Sometimes you don't. I mean, sometimes people are doing alterations. They're continuing to run whatever it is during that period of time. But potentially that is certainly not always the case. So I, I think it makes sense to do something.
Thank you.
So is Jennifer correctly wrong? So kind of what Ms. Mitchell was asking for was it the two years of the discontinuance and was she saying four years of the alteration? Is that what I was hearing or is that what you were proposing your initial piece?
Um, I don't think it's the, um, what I heard her say is not. I think we would do the proposal that we're, we're suggesting, which is to sync up the two things, but then to basically say if you implement, which you have two years to do, at that point, because you've pulled your building permit, you've gotten what you needed to meet that implementation standard. But then maybe you have to shut down for, so it would be kind of a third thing that we don't have right now, which would be saying essentially, we're going to extend that discontinuance period a little bit longer in order to give you time to actually complete whatever it is you've proposed. And I just threw out, maybe it's a year, maybe it's two. I don't really think it should be longer than that, frankly. That seems like plenty to me. But that's just me. I don't know.
Well, I would say that two additional years would be four years that we have now. So it's you know, I agree with you, Jennifer, it shouldn't be more or more than two.
Yeah, that's true. There would be some symmetry to doing two because that's kind of what we have right now, but not really, because nobody knows what it means. Uh, which I think Sarah summed up well. It's like, it's confusing, so we need to do something.
Yeah, well, and I like in that as a kind of compromise on that to give the authority of the extension to the planning department to make that that case and give you the authority to do so, I think is an appropriate mitigating step that would work for everyone. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, yeah, two things. One, I, I guess you kind of responded to the uh, the issue with the, that timeframe and I, I think, uh, you know, a tweak is maybe in order, um, as you recommended. Uh, but I, I really wanted to make just a general comment. I guess it was really encouraging to hear from the public that these changes uh, solve some problems and are going to benefit some people in a positive way. So I think it just kind of validates the need for making these changes and, and why, and why, you know, and how it's, it's going to be helpful for, for variety reasons. So that's all I had to say.
Anyone else?
I don't have my hand up, but I just really, really want to thank everyone that took their time to research and be here to testify that as you can see, we really appreciate that input and those questions and requests. It helps us to make a better decision. So thank you all for being here.
Michael, you haven't had much to say tonight. You have anything to add to this?
Uh, no, uh, I, I, I really thought that, uh, that it was a good presentation and uh, Jennifer and Martha did an excellent job here and putting this together. And I, I, I really liked the, the public comments as well. And, uh, it, it looks like we're making some changes that are very positive.
I agree. Anyone else?
Are we moving into deliberation or?
Let's move into deliberation.
I, I'm happy to kick it off. I'm, I'm supportive of everything that's been presented with one exception. Think we all know where I'm going with this one. Um, you know, I, I have quite a bit of experience actually with the, uh, template test on timber. I looked at some property to build on and I didn't qualify, which was sad, but I really, it, it brought it home to why. And I really love that Clackamas County is more restrictive than the state. I'd love to see it, it even be more restrictive. And the reason I say that, and it's something we talked about earlier, is it isn't a house. It, it's a driveway and a house and a septic tank and drain fields. It's a barn or two and it's fencing and livestock and a house and other outbuildings. So, you know, if we are going to say as Clackamas County, we value our resource land, whether that's farming or timber, then we need to walk the walk. And, and I think by lowering the restriction, that is not what we are doing. Um, I think we, especially Clackamas County, highly values our timber property and I think we should, um, stand behind that. So I won't be supporting that piece. The rest, I think personally, I'm good to go. And thank you for this opportunity.
Oh, thank you, Tammy. Your voice is very important.
Well, I'll guess I'll jump in here next. Um, I want to, um, piggyback, if you will, on Tammy. Um, I also believe that we need to preserve the natural resources zones and the, the timber zone is so large at 80 acres in general as, uh, to further that, in other words, to keep our natural resources and to prohibit continual development in those areas. And so I also share with her not approving the lessening of the template taste test, in other words, leaving it where it is now. And I also, um, support what Sarah was, the attorney was mentioning about the, uh, discontinuance, that it does need, I think, to be, you know, more liberal than we were going to change it to. And that's because during COVID, things were shut down for close to three years. And we were talking about two years. So I do think also like, uh, Kevin was saying, um, some kind of meeting in the middle, even a middle again. In other words, we met in the middle from four years down to, you know, to two, but maybe like Jennifer was mentioning, some kind of, um, if you've done the building permit, then you can have another one year or whatever. So on, those are the two issues that I think not as in the, the staff notes, those two, no. Uh, one, one more liberal and one back to where we are now, more restrictive.
Thank you, Louise.
You're welcome.
Anyone else want to add to that?
I just put the, um, check on form. Are, are we allowed to pick and choose which areas we, um, cha- recommend and not?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you just need to do separate motions if you're going to do it that way. If you want to try to carve something out so everybody can vote on the rest. You can do it that way.
We'll probably have a more experienced, uh, commissioner make that motion, Jerry. No, I would like to add too, I really appreciate the testimony we had tonight. The nonconforming use, uh, I, just in my own neighborhood, I see it right now. There were, we were going to file for, uh, an application for, uh, just a pump house. And this was for an existing what, for putting in a new well to assist our existing well on the other side of the Sandy River. And this started many years ago. It would have run out by now. We'd be reapplying again. So extending this time would be something that we, I think is important, uh, especially if you have other agencies you're depending upon. And like Louise said, after pandemic, not everybody's come back yet and they're still looking for employees. And so there's a lot of delay. So, um, now I very much support what Kevin had to say too about coming into the middle. This is something that, uh, that's, you know, uh, we need to make this a little more friendly on timber dwelling, uh, test. This is, uh, I come from a timber background, cut a lot of timber down, but I did that in industrial properties and I, I did not do it with the intention of building homes. I did it with, uh, what exactly Oregon was about, and that was to fill log trucks and create jobs in manufacturing. Uh, now part of a watershed, uh, or white part of a watershed council, but, um, working to form a new one. I really believe that we need to protect our forests. We need to protect with what we have. Uh, and hardening these forests is not going to make it uh, safer. I admire, you know, the, the safest we can make this is by having a healthy watershed, and that's exactly what I'm working for. And that doesn't mean more homes. Uh, that it means homes in the correct places, uh, within urban growth boundaries or within areas that have already been identified as buildable areas. And that's my feeling.
So, uh, Murph, I, I, I would like some clarification here. Are we going to vote on or, or make recommendations on five separate issues here? I believe, uh, Jennifer put up, uh, five particular areas that she was talking to. Are we going to vote on each one of those or how is this going to be handled?
I, I think we're breaking, going to break it up, so perhaps maybe one held out.
We can, we can vote on all of it and then pull out two to do separate. So that, I mean, that's the most efficient way, but I'm sure Martha and Jennifer will guide us gently.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I would just note that there's actually nine issues, um, not five. So, uh, all the other ones, I'm assuming we don't have any concerns with.
Kevin?
So on the timber lot, oh, timber opening up for development or not, eh, in talking to a lot of people in areas, growing families, grown that and, you know, look at the case of land available to build houses to, for development and actually bring down home prices. I kind of, if we can, you know, again, find some compromise that, you know, I've, I've seen the timber industry of what we, what we used to have, what Oregon used to be as a stellar for job producer, but also that job producer created homes for people living here and having a good job and kind of take that way. So a lot of people have left for other states. So I'm kind of on the kind of opposite side here of, I'd like to open up for some more development so that we can maybe bring down some home prices and you know, encourage more people to get them in a homeownership. Cause like I've said in other meetings of the apartments and that, that I think we need to open up for single family home for them to, to have that yard to, they want farm and that can, can do that. So that's where I'm at on that one.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else?
Tom, you're being awful quiet.
Well, I, uh, I think we kind of know that there's a couple of issues that are, there's probably not going to be which ones we all agree on and then we'll vote on that one and then we'll split out the two that are more controversial and kind of move on. And that's, that's kind of where I, where I am. I kind of know where I stand and I just should, uh, go ahead and get the votes, uh, behind us. I don't really have anything more to add.
Can I ask Jennifer, is there a way to modify the forest template dwelling test to, uh, where it still preserves our net, uh, a lot of our privately owned forests? But there are areas that, uh, it might, that, that are very close, like we heard somebody lost by, you know, how many feet, uh, you know, when it's that close, that, that's, that's pretty challenging. Um, yeah.
Yeah.
What happened with David too, you know, the way it was recorded is, is that under a deed? Now, so is that something that if we, uh, go to a lot of record, is that going to change and open up certain areas?
Um, okay. So I think there's two different things there. With Rick, with regard to the template test, the county can't do anything just on our own. We can't decide to make the template smaller or change the shape or exempt certain areas. We, we can't do any of that. So we really only have the flexibility that we're talking about tonight, which is to exclude the lots and the houses on lots that are over 80 acres, to not exclude them anymore, to include them, I should say. Um, and to reduce the number of dwellings from, you know, that are required from either four or five to three, depending on which soil class we're talking about. That's it. And I don't, there's no way for us to analyze with any, it's not even possible to figure out if we did one of those and not the other, who does it help and who do, you know? Um, there's just no way to do that analysis. So I think it's a fairly straightforward. You're making the decision, do, does the county do everything the state permits us to do, meaning be as, you know, the least restrictive, we're allowed to be under state law or to be keep these additional restrictions, which will prevent some template dwellings from being approved. How many? I don't know. But certainly the one for the people that spoke tonight. Uh, your other question, I don't know what, what the Harrison situation is. I'm not sure I completely, there was some discussion of lot line adjustments and things, and I just don't know if if it's the case that their tax lot were separately deeded back before zoning. And then they were combined because they didn't meet the minimum lot size at first zoning. This amendment will change that. So then they would be lots of record because they were separately deeded prior to zoning. If there's some other issue going on, like it had something to do with lot line adjustments that weren't allowed, then this isn't going to fix that. So I wasn't a hundred percent clear, um, but if it was that lot consolidation piece, uh, then yes, this would, this would correct that issue.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm happy to make a motion if we're ready to rock it.
I think we're ready.
Okay. Um, I'd like to make a motion to advise the Board of County Commissioners to approve ZDO 283 as proposed with two exceptions. Um, and I believe, and do I stop there, Jennifer? And then make a separate motion on the other two later? So you're going to, let me just clarify, you're going to pull out the template test and what's the other one we're going to pull out? Uh, hold on, I got it flagged here. It's the, uh, extend the nonconforming use discontinuance. Okay, so I did, I didn't hear anybody say they disagreed with that. Nope, no.
Right, okay.
Would want to modify it to add. Sure. So you could do, may I suggest that you just sort of, we'll just have an agreement amongst ourselves that the, that the template test is going to come out and somebody's going to make a separate motion on that. So so you're not voting against the template. What I want to make sure is that somebody isn't somehow having to vote against the template test on this first motion. So we're going to remove that and you're going to be, and you're basically making a motion that you, you're going to recommend approval of the package So we're gonna remove that and you're gonna, and you're basically making a motion that you, you're gonna recommend approval of the package, leaving aside the template test with two, I think two changes, I'm hoping. The one staff recommended, which was to make the corrections to the lot of record definition, to make sure we don't do more than what we thought we were doing. Um, so as recommended, as drafted by staff or something like that. And then the second one being the nonconforming use, however, whatever you're gonna direct us to do, I think that can be one motion. And then on that, and then somebody can, somebody else who's presumably in support of the template test changes can make a motion for that. And you can vote on that separately.
Okay.
That's what I would do.
Okay. I don't know that I'm gonna get that verbiage exactly right, but I'm gonna.
That wasn't perfect.
Okay.
Mine was not perfect.
So restating the motion to say, to advise the Board of County Commissioners to approve staff's recommendation of ZDO two eight three as proposed with the exception of removing, aligning the county's requirements for forest template dwellings with the minimum requirements under state law. In addition, um, in addition, we want to add some verbiage to extend the nonconforming use discontinuance period from one year to two years for those with, you know, applications in the works. Pretty vague there. And then I'm not sure how to word the part about the lot of record.
So can I, I want to clarify, sorry, I know I'm like participating too much here, but the, um, or not, I want to be sure. So I think I heard everybody say they're fine with the basic discontinuance going from one year to two years.
Right.
But what you're interested in is if someone has an alteration application that they implement, they get like an extra discontinuance period. And there was some disagreement about whether that's one year or two years more. And I thought it'll be sufficient for us to draft something, if that's what you're saying.
That was what I tried to say. Yes, that's perfect.
So do you, are you, do you want to just one one in your motion?
Say that last part again.
You need to probably move whether you want them to get one more year or two more years.
Oh, um, in the motion, I guess I would say, uh, an additional two years.
Okay. And then for a lot of record verbiage, I think you can just say, and that staff will amend the draft definition of lot of record to ensure that the changes that are made are consistent with the, um, the summary that we wrote of what we were doing. How about that?
That was exactly what I meant to say. And I know Darcy's capturing every word. So I'm so excited.
So that, we're gonna be able to draft this motion.
That was my very pathetic attempt at a motion. That was a harder one. Um, and so we'd need a second.
I'll second that. And, yeah. I, I'm used to crafting motions so I can feel Darcy on correcting.
So.
We're gonna have to lean on Kevin too occasionally too.
Yeah.
So I, I have a question. I just want to make sure I understand what I'm voting for.
Okay.
Uh, so we're essentially, uh, deleting the item on the, uh, related to the forest land. But the other, but we're going to modify the extension to, from two years to four years. Is that what you're just said? I'm trying to clarify what you meant.
Um, it's already a two year and it's for those who have a, um, what, what kind of application?
If they have an alteration.
That's right.
Implement it, they would get two more years of discontinuing.
So they order to implement.
Yeah.
Two more years, two more years than what your recommendation said. So four years.
Four years, if they have an alteration application in the process, they get two more to finish that. And if they don't.
Okay. All right. I get it.
Just, just two more on alteration. That's it.
Correct. Yes.
Otherwise it's, otherwise it says written.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
So, so right now they have four years on the alteration. Is that right?
Yes, but this is different. It, and I know this is so, I, I hardly even know how to explain it. But, um, but you basically have three different things based on what Sarah's, uh, Mitchell's testimony was. Right now we've got two. We've got the discontinuance at a year and the implementation, meaning how long does it take you to pull your building permits? Four years for an alteration. Those don't match. We said, let's set those both at two. That wouldn't change under what I understood her testimony to be. Instead, so we still have two and two, but then if you get to that point and you implement, then you're gonna get an automatic extension of the discontinuance period from basically that point in time. So we'd be saying, okay, you pulled your building permit and yes, we're gonna have to draft this. And it's, you know, you're gonna have to give us a little latitude to figure that out, understanding it's gonna go to the board and there's gonna be another hearing. So it would be, you know, they would get basically to, an additional two years from, I think, from when they pull those permits. So once it's implemented, you get an extra two-year discontinuance from that point. That's the way I think it would work if I understood her correctly.
And that is how I would also recommend it. Definitely.
And it makes sense, makes sense to me.
Okey dokey.
Yeah, clear as mud, right? Clear as mud.
I think I got it now. I'm a little slow.
In this motion, we've removed number two.
First, yeah, it's not in this motion.
This for this, correct.
And then we vote on this one and then we ask for a second motion.
So I will second Tammy's.
Actually, Kevin already did. Sorry.
Kevin already did. Oh, sorry.
So we're just at open discussion.
I'm, I'm way off today. Sorry. I'll just shut up and vote.
Oh no, it's open discussion.
That's a good third, Tom.
So we move for a vote?
Yeah.
Okay. So all in favor of accepting the motion that's been described and presented by Tammy and Jennifer? Martha, I think you threw something in maybe.
How about we raise our hands for the vote?
Yeah, let's raise our hand. Okay, we have six.
I see, yeah, I guess it's six.
Uh, no, I don't see, oh, Michael's not, so it's not unanimous, but it's.
Not unanimous. Michael, Michael, are you in favor?
I got it, I got it.
There he is.
There.
So unanimous. Yes.
Unanimous, okay. All opposed? Anyone opposed?
Nobody's opposed.
There's no one left.
Okay. Great. It has been moved by commissioners and seconded by commissioners that we will, uh, I'll restate this motion? No, I can't.
Don't do it.
We're past that, Murph.
It passed.
Oh, good.
Good, we're good.
Okay. Okay.
So now you're, you're looking for a second motion, I think, from somebody on number two.
I'll move that we approve the forest template test piece as recommended by staff.
And I'll second that.
Discussion? Okay. All in favor? Raise hand. All opposed? We have three on that?
Three on that. Let them get their hands down here. I think it's, Michael was voting yes. Is that correct, Michael?
Yes, that's correct. I'm voting yes.
Okay, so it's three to, so it fails four, three.
Okay.
Perfect. Hey.
Okay.
Okay. And then I guess we move for closing this hearing.
Yeah, you don't need a motion. You can just close it.
Okay. I move that we close.
Before we, before we move on to the next one, Murph, is there a chance we can get a couple minute break?
Absolutely. Uh, how, how long do you want?
Uh, just two minutes would be great with me, whatever I need to be one.
Let's do five minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so eight thirty-six, we'll be back. Great. Jennifer, anything to, uh, before we start this hearing? Anything?
Nope. Just ready to launch into your.
Just launch, okay.
Just launch, yes.
Okay, stand back. All right. Public hearing is now open for consideration of ZDO two eight seven, a legislative proposal to amend the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and zoning and development ordinance. Assisting us in the hearing today are several members of the county staff, Principal Planner Martha Fritzy, Director Jennifer Hills Hughes, and Administrative Specialist Darcy Renhart. Oh, and Ellen Rogland. Yes. The public, the public hearing is being conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. Panelists for today, today's hearing, which includes members of the planning commission and county staff have both audio and video capability. If a panelist is participating with audio but not video, members of the audience will not see the panelist's name on their screen, but also, but will be able to hear when they speak. Audience members who have joined the meeting will have their mics muted unless they wish to testify, in which case they will be called upon to do so by the county staff moderator. Audience members, uh, video will not be turned on at any time. Today's hearing is being recorded as required by law. The county will make every effort to post the recording on the county website as soon as possible. The planning commission is charged with making a recommendation on the application to the Board of County Commissioners. The record of this hearing will be forwarded to the board, which will make final decision on this matter. The board will conduct another hearing on this application on July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three at ten AM. That hearing will be de novo, meaning that the hearing will be started. A new and additional testimony may be offered. Tonight's hearing may not go beyond ten PM unless the majority of the planning commissioners in attendance vote to continue past that time. If not concluded, it will be continued to the date and time certain. The hearing may be continued for other reasons as well. If an announcement of an additional hearing date and time is made tonight, it will be the only notice given of the additional hearing. A public hearing will be conducted as follows. Planning and zoning staff report. Enter into the record any additional correspondence received, technical information from other government agencies, testimony by representatives of recognized community planning organizations or hamlets. Uh, maximum of ten minutes per CPO. Testimony by any person, maximum length, three minutes per speaker, more as determined by the chair. Close of the public hearing, planning commission, discussion in action. Testimony, there will be designated time during the hearing when it will be open for testimony. The chair will make it clear when this time is. If you want to provide testimony, you will utilize the raise hand feature on Zoom. Attendees on the PC and iPad, you have a raised hand button on the Zoom bar, bottom or top. Attendees by telephone use a star nine to activate the raise hand feature. When the moderator switches, you order to provide testimony, your screen will look different for a moment. Primarily you'll see a participants, all participants, uh, cameras, not just the one who is speaking. Staff will call upon you when it's time for you to provide testimony. For the record, please begin by stating your name and where you're from and by whom you're representing. Once you have provided your testimony, your mic will be muted and your screen will be returned to normal. Staff report. Planning and zoning staff will now present the staff report. Are there any questions from the commissions?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna jump in. Um, let me get my PowerPoint open. And. All right. Can we all see that? So, so hello, I'm Martha Fritzy, uh, with the county's planning and zoning division. I am going to, um, give an overview of ZDO two eighty-seven, which includes some amendments to our zoning and development ordinance related to places of worship. So a little bit of background first, um, the proposal includes legislative amendments. Oh, not to the comprehensive plan, but only to the zoning and development ordinance to ensure that our zoning and development ordinance is compliant with a federal law called the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, or RALUPA. And specifically the provisions under RALUPA that, um, specify that uh, local zoning codes must treat places of worship equal to other similarly situated nonreligious uses. And so we are here doing this because, um, the county is in, uh, there's been a lawsuit um, that alleges the, there is unequal treatment in our zoning and development ordinance. Um, and so after spending some time looking at our zoning and development ordinance, both county council and planning staff, um, although not in agreement necessarily with all of the allegations in the lawsuit, have decided that it would, it's probably, um, better to make some changes to our zoning development ordinance to ensure that we don't have any potential, um, conflicts. And so we reviewed our code, um, for how places of assembly are treated in the zoning code versus other, versus other places of assembly, including, um, some that have recently come to our attention that might be similar to um, churches or place, or, or places of worship, including some recreational uses, um, that are listed because they have, uh, facilities in them that could arguably be used for assembly as well. And so when, once we looked through our zoning code, we realized there's potential conflicts in nearly every single zoning district. Um, and so this package of code amendments is, uh, what we are proposing to remedy that. And so very generally, the proposal would amend the allowance for places of worship in almost all of our zoning districts. Um, and I'll go through it in a little bit more detail later. Commercial, a number of our commercial zoning districts did not need, um, any sort of change. Most of the changes that are proposed would take a place of worship from a, um, approval under a conditional use permit to make it approved as just a primary use. Um, and just for a little bit of context, a primary use in our zoning code means that the use itself is allowed without any additional land use approvals, that it's been determined that it's an appropriate use in the zoning district, um, and that you, you can use the property for that. It certainly does not get anyone, um, be it a place of worship or any other, any other type of use out of having to meet every single development standard that we have in our zoning code. Um, and they, and any development may have to undergo some additional land use review. Something like a design review, or if there's floodplain on the property, they go through a floodplain development. Um, so there is still some development review that might have to happen, even if the use is determined or is established as a primary use. Whereas a conditional use means that the use is only allowed if it's approved through this conditionally used process. It's a discretionary land use approval, um, includes considerations of some factors like the character of the surrounding area, um, consistency with our comprehensive plan. But even if that is approved, um, it still may have to go through the, the same additional development review, uh, processes. And so right now in a lot of our zones, um, where places of worship are allowed, they are required to go through this conditionally used permit. Whereas some of these other uses that were identified that might be similar do not have to go through the conditional use permit. And so that's why we would change them. Um, this proposal would also allow places of worship in a few zones where they are not currently allowed, including all of the county's urban and rural industrial zones and the open space management zone. So I've kind of lumped the changes generally into the four main category types of zoning districts that we have. And so in the residential zones, um, places. And so in the residential zones, places of worship are currently allowed as a conditional use. The proposal would be to change it to a primary use. And that is because the most permissive use that may be similar, similarly situated to a place of worship is also a primary use. There may be some other uses that are places of assembly that are not primary uses, but what we did was we looked at our code and decided which one of these has, is the most permissive. And then we are proposing to change the places of worship to the same process as that use. And in this case, in the residential zones, it's recreational uses, government-owned recreational uses. It includes an extensive list. I have just included some of the pieces of the list for things that may be considered similar to a place of worship in turn, in terms of the assembly use. There are a whole number, a long list of other recreational uses in there. And one of the reasons, I guess, I sort of skipped over this rationale or this background of one of the reasons that we have decided to go this route is that really, as we looked at our zoning code, there were two options. We could change the allowance for places of worship to match the most permissive use that may be similarly situated, or alternatively, we could change the allowance or make it more restrictive, the allowance for whatever the most permissive use is into a conditional use in this example. And we had gone to the Board of County Commissioners a couple of months ago to a policy session and asked them the question, which way, you know, which way should we look at this? And they directed staff to be more permissive for places of worship. And so that's why the proposal is going this direction. In the, in the commercial zones, the current places of worship are currently allowed in some zones already as a primary use, in seven of the 15 commercial zones that we have. And it's a conditional use in the other eight zones. And so this proposal, again, the most permissive use in that zone is this government-owned recreational uses that is a primary use. So this proposal would change the allowance for places of worship to a primary use in those eight zones where it's a conditional use. There's no change necessary in the other zones. In the industrial zones, places of worship are not listed, meaning that they are not allowed. This proposal is to make them also a primary use in the industrial zones because of certain recreational sports facilities that are also a primary use. And again, arguably, maybe similarly situated in terms of being used for assembly purposes. And so that's the proposal. The one, the one thing I should mention is that under Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, there is a size limit for any types of places of assembly that are in our regionally significant industrial areas. And that would, that applies to any places of assembly and would also apply to places of worship if they were to locate in our regionally significant industrial areas. And then the open space zone, we have OSM, which is an open space management district that is inside the urban growth boundary. Again, places of worship are not listed, but there are some other uses that are listed as a conditional use, including certain indoor recreation facilities and libraries. And so this proposal would add places of worship also to this zone, but as a conditional use. And so similar to those other, those other types of uses, it would have to go through the land use application approval and meet all of the standards, the discretionary standards for the conditional use, and also go through a hearing. So that was a brief summary. I'm happy to answer any more specific questions about specific zones or types of zones if you want me to. In the staff report that you received a week and a half ago or so, there is, there are some analysis and findings related to all the applicable criteria under statewide planning goals, Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, the county's Comprehensive Plan, and the zoning development ordinance. Staff has found that these proposed amendments are consistent with all of those applicable criteria. We did receive one comment, however, it, I believe it was emailed to you separately from your pocket because it came just after we'd sent it, and it's from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, or DLCD, state agency. And in their comments, they expressed some concerns about allowing places of worship in industrial zoned areas. This is an issue that had also come up at the Board of County Commissioners. DLCD specifically asserts that the allowance doesn't adequately protect industrial areas. I think it's important to note that there are already places of assembly, assembly allowed in industrial areas, sometimes as a conditional use, and then those certain recreational uses that we have identified that might be similar are allowed as a primary use. And Metro clearly includes this idea of assembly places allowed in industrial areas because it specifically limits the size. And so I think that it's difficult to argue that allowing churches in, in an area or places of worship in an area where other assembly places are allowed is somehow different when it comes to protecting industrial areas. And I guess arguably, the, the, the other solution would be to restrict or just not allow some of these other uses. If there's a big concern about places of worship in the industrial areas and what impacts that might have, it would have to go one way or the other. Or suppose we could not do anything with it, and I think that our zoning code may still be at risk under the RALUPA requirements for equal, for equal treatment. So that's sort of the biggest issue that has come out of, of this to date. There's been no other comments, but staff is still recommending that the Planning Commission recommend adoption of ZDO 287 as shown in attachment A, which includes all of the redlined, all the proposed amendments in the various zoning code sections. That is it. Does anyone have any questions for me? I'm gonna stop my share, hold on, I'd like to look at people.
Okay, any questions, commissioners? Or do we have any government agencies here?
Kevin has his hand up.
So my only question, you know, as we're just looking at conditional use of the open spaces zone, it just seems that it'd be really inconsistent to say it's a conditional use in an open spaces zone to not allow assembly of this in an open spaces zone. That just strikes me as be inconsistent, just under the definition of open spaces. So, so I, you know, almost, you know, I want to hear all the testimony for it, but I may have an amendment to this just on related to that piece.
And so maybe I need to clarify, because I went really fast through this. The, the OSM zone, the open space zone, is specifically applied to a certain type of open space that we have in the urban area, and it's called, correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, public and community use open space. And so this is not the type of open space that is there for protection of natural resources. And so it's often the zone that you see over like school playgrounds or school properties and things like that. So, anyway.
Michael.
Yeah, just, just a definition, a definition of a place of worship. What, what are we talking about there?
Um. There is no definition on no zone. Is there, I don't think this is definition of a place of worship. I'm not entirely sure how to answer this. I mean, it's traditionally what we think of as a church. I would expect that there is some sort of definition out there, but it's not something that we're proposing to add to our zoning code.
It used to be that we referred to them in the zoning code as churches. And initially that it was changed to place of worship for our parking standards, probably 20 some years ago, because we had to adopt some parking standards from Metro, and that was the standard that they, or the name that they used. And we didn't really catch the fact that it created a inconsistency. And so then later we changed churches to places of worship throughout. But generally, it's supposed to be more expansive so that it could cover things like synagogues or temples or things that people don't, in those faiths, don't call churches. But it is intended to mean any sort of, I guess I would say faith-based or spiritual worship center that you would have.
Okay, so I'm thinking back a long time ago, when we used to have drive-in theaters. If somebody wanted to put up something like that, where people could pull in a car and take a speaker off the rack there and put it in, and somebody up there on the stage was making a religious event out of this, that would be considered a place of worship?
Well, that's an interesting question, and I think, I don't, I don't know how to answer that, except to say I think that there would be some thorny questions that staff would have to answer if people propose something, you know, that maybe doesn't really seem like a place of worship. Like, okay, I'm gonna put a mall here and tell you that it's a place of worship. Well, I mean, I imagine there's some case law, and we'd have to consult with county council and be really careful, because of course, freedom of religion is this cornerstone of constitutional law. So we do have to be careful about trying to question people's religious practices. But at some point, I think they, there would have to be some evidence that this was truly a, some sort of deeply held faith, and they had adherence to it, and it was part of their normal religious practice and all of that. And it doesn't, as Martha said, get people out of the development standards. So for instance, you know, if, if you're required to have landscaping, you still have to have landscaping. If you're required to have parking, you still have to have parking. If you're required to screen from neighbors, you have to screen from neighbors. The county has a noise code people have to follow. So could somebody do an outdoor place of worship? I think the answer is yes, they could, they could now, and they could, they could in the future. But you make a good point. You know, there are some, there are some reasons why conditional uses may be a good idea. We just kind of have a problem potentially with our code having conflicts with this federal law because of other things that we allow.
I totally understand that, and I, I'm concerned because we have some folks that are claiming to be a religion that seem to promote other ideas other than a worship situation. And if they want to claim to be a worshiping service, we might run into some serious problems here.
That might be out of the commission, planning commissioner's hands. I don't think, yeah, I think that's beyond us at that point. Any more, Michael?
Yeah, I'm also concerned about establishing these places of worship in industrial zones. We need to have industry in our, our community. And I put, restrict the development of industry in some of these zones because somebody wants to put up a place of worship is a very concern of mine. We need to promote industry and the ability for people to earn money in our community. And restricting, you know, the development of that by having a religious operation going on where it should be industrial product concerns me, concerned me very much.
Thank you, Michael. Carrie?
Thanks, Mur. So Jennifer and Martha, thank you for clarifying when the open space definition, because that, how you define open space can be very problematic in this situation. If it was like a chunk of a forest land that is confined as a, as a open space, I wouldn't want this type of situation occurring. And also, thank you for clarifying that they, all of the develop proposals have to meet the rules. Rest of the developer, so that's also comforting. So those were, actually, I had questions, those were both the questions that I had, and you answered me. So we're starting to read mine, which is really good. With that in mind, can we, is there a way to, I know that Board of Commissioners indicated that we wanted to be more permissive than going the other direction. Could we, can we recommend that that the proposal that's been identified or made be adopted or recommended to be approval except for the, the industrial land portion, where that could be more, less, so go the other direction on that particular land use and not take what staff has proposed at large as a one big, kind of similar to what the other public hearing we had earlier today. So that's a question.
Yes, you can certainly do that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, there's the, you can do a number of different things depending on where you end up. And I would just, I want to remind everyone, we want to check for testimony before we get too far down the road of things that sound like deliberation. We just have one person in the audience, I don't know if they're here to testify, but in terms of the options that are available to the Planning Commission, you could recommend approval as recommended by staff. You could recommend denial. You could recommend approval of part of it, denial of part of it. Any of those things are fair game, and I think the thing to just sort of realize is that, you know, I suppose you could have an opinion that says you don't think there's a RALUPA conflict. That's an opinion, I, you know, we're, we're saying we think we have potential conflicts. No court has determined that at this point. We think we have potential conflicts, we're trying to address that. If the commission feels that we don't, then you, you say that to the board. Alternatively, if you agree, we may have a conflict, there are two different ways to resolve it. You can, as Martha said, make places of worship approval more permissive, or you could make other uses more restrictive, and you might decide you want some of both. If you don't want places of worship in industrial zones, then the alternative would be to prohibit the uses that seem similarly situated. There's nothing that says the county can't do that. We just have to re-notify, and it would be a different, we wouldn't be doing it really as part of this. You'd end up carving that out and coming back later for that piece. But you can absolutely make that recommendation with the board, and then they'll decide how they, you know, obviously want to move forward with that.
Thank you.
I want to piggyback on Michael's comment, and it's only because we had an experience out our way, and it was basically a religious organization. They had purchased on EFU and were basically running a rehabilitation center. And, and so, I mean, going anywhere from a drive-in service all the way over to a living rehabilitation under the umbrella of worship to get healthy, to get whatever. So that's another thought, you know, that I had is, do we really, do we need, or do we have, and do we really need to understand the definition and what those limits are?
Thank you. Louise?
Yeah, and just to follow up with that, I believe there may be a definition, at least of a religious organization, either in the ORSs or the LARs or some kind of administrative policy. And the reason I say that is this, when the state of Oregon hires someone for the position of chaplain, it goes on to say that you must be representative of a religious organization that is recognized. And so in other words, it's, I work for the prison system, I work for corrections. So we might hire a chaplain who represented WICA, a WICAN, the WICAN organization. So in other words, not your stereotypical Catholic, Christian, Jewish, Muslim, what have you, an, an other faith, if you will. And but, so there was definition there, and I don't know again, whether it's ORS or OAR, but I believe the state has some definition because they had to in hiring chaplains. And there may be chaplains in other state agencies besides correction, also at the youth authority, I believe. So we could look at that if we're trying to define places of worship because that corresponds with recognized religious organizations. In other words, you can't, I can't just out of the blue say, hey, I'm Louise and I have a religion. Well, that's not a recognized religion. You have to have some recognition somehow. In other words, maybe show that you have a following in something. I don't, again, there's, there are details of it, and I know the state, I'm pretty sure the state has them because they use it in their HR to hire chaplains, who are, again, not your traditional. who are again, not your traditional thought, what you would think of as a chaplain.
Thank you, Louise. That was good.
You're welcome.
We have anyone in the audience, before we get too far into this, uh, that wants to give testimony?
There's nobody in the audience.
Our, our one person left.
Disappeared.
I guess they weren't here for this.
Okay.
So you can sort of, um, open and close, I guess, the public testimony all at once.
We're gonna close public testimony and move right into deliberation. I'm gonna, I do have something to say on this too. I got a couple of things, uh, before I hand it over to Tom.
Mark had something to say. Oh, I guess not.
I, I was, I can wait, sorry.
I want to hit on the industrial also. I, I looked this up when I first saw this come across to us, a- as I mentioned in the workshop that, uh, industrial lands and other parts of the country are, uh, buying up, are, are being bought up by mega churches or very large, uh, religious organizations because they need to expand. And in many cases, there's abandoned buildings and the services are there. They have water that can take care of a three hundred thousand square foot building. Uh, they have the parking, they have uh, the fire protection and the place is vacant and they probably get a deal on it and they want to move in and do something with it. So that's something to consider too. Is that putting something to use that's been abandoned for maybe many years? I don't know. That's something to think about. Uh, also, open space management or open space managed properties, are they government properties in most cases? Are they privately owned?
I think a lot of them are government-owned properties, um, at this point in time. But I'd have to look at all of the, all the sites. There aren't, uh, there aren't a whole lot of them in the urban area. A lot of them are government-owned parks or school playgrounds, but they are, um, we have applied open space to golf courses. So for example, Weaver Lee Golf Course is zoned open space management. Um, I believe cemeteries, so there used to be some open space management associated with a cemetery over in the Clackamas area, I think. I don't know that it still is. So, um, they do tend to be pretty limited, you know, sites that have that zoning and probably not hugely likely in most cases to be developed with a place of worship because they are already owned for public park or public school purposes. But you could have possibly a site that might change over.
You, being public, you would have to open to all religion then. I think, I mean, I'm not a constitutional expert, but if you're open on, for, on public property to one, like let's say in a cemetery or a golf course, are you going to be open to all religion, so to speak?
I mean, if it was owned by the government, there would potentially be issues, but that would be, you know, again, I think it's relatively unlikely that a school district, although sometimes they, you know, will allow the use of their gymnasium or their, for anybody, you know, who wants to rent it or whatnot.
Go ahead, Tom.
I was just gonna say, um, it's, uh, Sunnyside Elementary School has been used for public places of worship for years. Um, you know, it's changed as the church congregation develops and they can afford to build their own facility. Uh, they, but, I, we have, our neighbors were members, which, uh, before, before they built the church, they were at the, uh, the school. So that's pretty common practice already. I, uh, I kind of like the idea of, um, reconsidering how we treat industrial space. For the same reasons, uh, and, and having, in my former life, we were big industrial developers as well. And the region has a, you know, a major shortage, at least when I was at the port. And I'm assuming that hasn't changed or it's gotten worse. And so I'm always, uh, concerned whenever we start, uh, using industrial space, or property, I should say, for other uses when we already have a shortage to begin with. So, um, I, uh, but I understand we can't have a double standard. So, uh, I think what, it, what we should consider is if we're really serious about preserving industrial space, we need to rewrite the zoning codes that, uh, encourage that, not, create more opportunities for it to be used for other purposes. So, um, so, um, I would, uh, I would support not including, uh, industrial lands. But at the same time, you have to change the other codes to make it equitable for both sides. I would support something like that. Uh, if we can't do that, then I don't see where we really have a choice in the matter. Uh, if we've, we've gotta provide the same, uh, uh, we, we need to keep things equitable. Right now, they're not, so that's kind of where I am.
A- and that sparks another, uh, question to me is, what about, uh, mitigation? If one property can be occupied, could they provide another property for that industrial use that they don't think? Well, we do that with habitat conservation areas and water quality that, you know, somebody wants to develop this and perhaps mitigation will allow, uh, another area to be developed. I don't know. Confusing. Michael, you had something to say?
Uh, yeah, I go, I go along with, uh, some of the comments that Tom made. Um, in my formal residence in, uh, New Orleans, Louisiana, we had a, um, we had a, uh, airport put in and it was in an area that was, uh, not populated. And then after the airport went in there, the, uh, local area developed into a, uh, residential area and then they wanted to shut down the, uh, airport because of the noise. Now, this same thing could happen here. We, we allow, uh, a religious organization to go into an industrial area and all of a sudden they complain about the noise from the, uh, industrial situation there. And now we have a, a, a very big issue. I, I'm against having, uh, uh, you know, modifying our, our zoning to allow religious organizations to go into industrial areas. I think it's gonna be a bigger problem. They're gonna have parking issues. They're gonna complain about possibly noise during their religious service with the, uh, whatever. I, 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 I just against that. We need to restrict uh, our industrial areas to just industrial use. That's my comments.
Well, and on that comment, it, you know, a hundred and fifty years ago, uh, when communities were being planned, uh, some, some of the things I had read, uh, Garden Cities of the World or something like that, I can't remember the exact name of it, but it showed separation of industrial sites. And I, and I think this was because of, uh, you know, safety reasons and, uh, probably contamination issues. I think it was much safer and easier for industrial to be conducted away from residential and, um, regular uh, public, uh, functions. This way, they don't have to look out for, uh, places that attract huge crowds or something of that nature. I don't know. To me, it looks like there was a reason why industrial areas were separated from, uh, more public areas.
Did I not read somewhere in here that there was a square footage limit in industrial or did I make that up in my head?
No, there is a square footage limit in certain industrial areas, the ones that have been, that have been identified by Metro as and mapped as the regionally significant industrial areas.
So we have general industrial, light industrial. These areas would probably be attractive, I would think, but if we got the heavy industrial, is that the target for, uh, opening up the zoning or has there been a specific request?
So it's not, there's no specific request in industrial zones. Um, so we have two, well, three urban industrial zones. The, the general industrial is really what used to sort of be considered heavy industrial and then the light industrial and business park. Um, those are all industrial, urban industrial zones. You will find general industrial and some light industrial in the regionally significant areas. You will also find some of it outside the regionally significant industrial areas. So the size limitation is a geography, not necessarily a zoning district.
So, uh, what I'm understanding here is that in some of the areas where we have the industrial zones, we have other facilities put in there like gyms or, or things like such as that, that possibly the employees of the industrial plants that are there go for recreational purposes. And that's why we were saying that a religious organization to go in there because we have these other uses going on that are not associated with industry. Am I correct with that?
Um, well, you are partially correct, yes. I mean, we, uh, our zoning code allows for other uses in our industrial areas that are not industrial uses and we allow things like recre- certain recreational uses, like gyms, like you were talking about. They're not necessarily for the employees. They're open to whomever wants to go. Um, there are other things, for example, in some of our urban industrial districts as a conditional use, you can have exhibition halls, stadiums and arenas. Um, you'd have to go through a conditional use. In one of our industrial zones, you could have fraternal organization lodge. Um, and so there are other things besides recreational uses that are allowed, um, in industrial zones that are not industrial uses. And so that's where this conundrum kind of lies. So if we're allowing other non-industrial uses, how, how, how are we gonna treat, um, other industrial uses that might be used as places of assembly for non-religious purposes? We, you know, how, how are we going to deal with the real places of assembly that are used for religious purposes? They can't be treated differently.
So when you say conditional use, uh, exactly what does that mean? What are the conditions that have to be met?
So a conditionally use means that the use is approved through a land use application um, that looks at cri- discretion, dis- discretionary criteria um, that looks at potential impacts. Sometimes traffic, um, looks at compliance with their comprehensive plan, goes through a public hearing. So certain uses are only allowed if they go through that process. And there are uses that are not industrial uses in industrial zones that are allowed through that process. Um, but, but there are other uses like certain recreational uses that, um, including gymnasiums and things that, that might be considered places of assembly that are just allowed as a primary use, meaning they don't have to go through that approval process.
My main concern there is with that one word, discretionary. That means somebody has to make a decision on this and that person should be leaning one way or the other. Am I correct with that?
Well, the person who makes the decision on it is the hearings officer and, and the hearings officer makes a decision based on the criteria. Um, but there is some discretion. Sure.
Okay.
Anyone else? I, I don't think, uh, there was something wrong with the original zoning by, um, keeping places of worship out of open space managed areas and industrial areas. I think there was a purpose for it. And, uh, you know, to in, in protect the worker, so to speak, uh, and open space manage, uh, you know, who are you gonna say can't worship, uh, if you're public? And I think that's an issue.
I mean, um, uh, it sounds to me like the pretty much the rest of the proposed, um, changes, uh, no one really has any, any qualms about but there is some concerns about one, one al- one particular item. So maybe in the interest of kind of moving this forward as we kind of do like we did the last time, pull that out, uh, and then, and then vote separately on the industrial one. And I would say, you know, we can all say we don't want, uh, places of worship, uh, in industrial land. However, I don't think we can say that without saying, and oh, by the way, then we need to have playing fields the same. Therefore, we need to change the other uses that are currently allowed if we're not gonna allow, uh, places of worship. To me, that's the only thing, that's the only way you're gonna make this fly. Otherwise legally, we don't really have a choice in the matter, in my, my opinion. So if we're gonna, if we wanna take a stand on the, the, the not allowing places of assembly, essentially, industrial lands, that's how we have to state it, not just, not just places of worship.
I'm happy to take a stab at it unless, unless Kevin, you'd like to take a stab at it.
I think I can, I can take a stab at for you, Tammy.
Why don't you do it then?
So I'd move approval of ZDO two eight seven with the exception of removing the places of worship from the industrial zone to be voted on separately.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Uh, open discussion.
Open discussion, excuse me. I'm sorry.
Okay. Now we can.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous?
It is.
Okay. I guess we have to put something together now. Kevin?
So instead of saying worship, we would say gathering, right? That we limit all gathering within industrial?
Yeah, I think we just want to change the, the language so it can, it's, uh, meets the intent of this equal playing field for all. And I, the, I think by, to your point, Tammy, I think the term places of assembly is, that's kind of the sticking point here. Since that can mean so many different things. So if, if the consensus of the commission is we, we don't want to allow, uh, places of assembly and period, any type, however, whatever that might imply, that's how we would approach it in a way that doesn't, um, specifically say we don't want, um, religious, um, places of worship, industrial land, is, is how I would think you'd want to frame it.
I, I think that's your motion. Oh.
I was just gonna make a suggestion. We, we really can't legally through this where we are right now in the process. So I think it would be more like recommend that the board not approve the changes in the industrial zones and pursue like a separate amendment package to do what you just said. Because we will have to come back, we'll have to send a postcard, which, you know, there aren't that many property owners in industrial zones, so that's not hugely burdensome, but we'll have to do that.
So no motions necessary, right, Jennifer?
You could leave it. You've already essentially done that. I just don't know if there's, if there was anybody who was in favor of the industrial, then they might want to make a separate motion and see if they can get a second. I don't know.
Good point.
And, but if not, you can let it go.
I was just gonna comment what Tom said on gatherings. There may be, uh, work-related gatherings that would have to be somewhat permitted, uh, the right to assemble.
There's a line. I mean, I think there's a line here, Murph. You're right. I mean, we're all gathering every time we do anything with more than one of us. So sometimes it does make you a little crazy, like Mar- Martha and I trying to figure out, like, what is the line between when, you know, something? But I think we're really looking at things.
But I think we're really looking at things that where the, the purpose is really to have groups assembling for something beyond work or, you know. I think, I think we're okay on having like an after-work gathering at a manufacturing plant. We're probably, we're probably safe on that.
Yeah, I think, I think Michael, I agree with your point. And I think we collectively all agree that we want industrial, we want it to thrive in the county. And except for right now, we're having an issue trying to get industrial in here. So to share Murphy's point about, you know, some of those buildings not being utilized right now. I mean, if we could utilize something, I mean, it could make our county a great place. As, as we say in our, our motto, great place to live, work and play. So I'll, I'll, I'll throw, I'll throw out the motion that I recommend we approve the places of worship in the industrial zones and leave it as it lies.
Second?
Yeah, I mean, you, you let it go if you want, that's.
I don't think I understand what you're, what you're moving there. You're saying you want to have religious organizations in industrial zones? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm motioning, yes. And it dies for lack of a second.
Pardon himself Kevin, good job.
I mean, that's what you want the BCC to hear, that we have a thorough discussion and we're not supportive of it. And so, you know, talk about it, right? Yay, oh my goodness.
We'll share, we'll share all of that with the everything, you know, we'll, we'll summarize all this, highlight this as a significant issue, explain that the planning commission understands we may have a potential relupa conflict, but there's another way to resolve it. And they prefer at least six to one to do it this other way. And we'll explain all that.
And will you also come up with a way to define place of worship?
Probably not in the next two weeks.
Okay.
Your, your point is well taken, but that, that is one of those things that requires substantial analysis.
Yes.
And probably a legal opinion.
Yes.
That was Jennifer's code for meaning the lawyers need to help us.
Yeah, we need to go hire a first amendment lawyer somewhere. Yeah, first amendment lawyer.
Are we ready to close the, the hearing?
Well, unless you want to add a condition about defining places of worship.
I think that's a beyond us.
Yeah, way beyond us.
And before we close, we have two hearings here that before we have mentioned sending a planning commissioner to help explain our decisions. Are we going to choose somebody to do that? I don't see hands.
I, I mean, I, I work during the workday, so I think that takes me out.
One of these hearings is July 12th. Am I going to get this right Martha? The minor amendments are July 12th and the relupa is July 26th, both at 10 a.m. Both with a zoom option.
I, I could do the 26th, I have that, I asked for that day off. That's a vacation day, so I can, I could do that one. If you'd like chair.
Conflicts about unfortunately, so.
I'm conflicted on the.
Be willing to step up, but unfortunately have some commitments on both those teams, so.
It's nice that we can do that via zoom now, just to be available.
Yeah, I can squeeze in the 12th, I'll squeeze in. Great.
So just let Mar- maybe just let Martha know ahead of time. It's good, cause then we put a spot in the script for it as opposed to having them there in their light. And we're like, anyone here from the planning commission? And there's just a big silence. And then they're thinking, how come nobody's here from the planning commission?
That was very effective, I thought. You know, I thought our trial was very effective and.
Yes.
Have we closed the hearing Murph?
Yes, we're going to close.
Cause I, I did have an other business I wanted to bring up. I just, I'm going to make this as brief as I possibly can. At four o'clock today, I had a different zoom with public and government affairs. It's our quarterly hamlet. And Chris Lyons was there and was talking about all the legislative stuff that was rushed through. So that was quite an accomplishment and a lot of activity for the county. One thing he brought up that I, was the first time I'd heard of it was Senate bill 1013. Is anybody familiar with that?
Heard some.
Oh, I, I knew Jennifer would be.
Oh, yes.
I've had serious heartburn since I read this. I thought, oh my God, so in a nutshell, it is in rural residential, you can house somebody in an RV next to your house. Everybody.
So I think, um, they did make some changes and, um, just, I haven't actually put my eyes on the like final version that the senate passed. But my understanding is it started out as, and just full disclosure, the bill was introduced at the request of Chair Smith. So it is, it was officially a Clackamas County, if you will, backed bill, although it was the chair. It wasn't like a vote of the board to, to submit it. It was on her behalf is my understanding. So we were pretty well aware of it from the beginning that this was happening. The original draft was mandatory. So it would have said that all 36 counties must allow, and we'll talk in a minute about what that was. It passed the, the senate that way, went to the house. House amended it last, I knew amended it to make it permissive, not mandatory. So counties may allow. And then it sat because of the, um, you know, the shutdown in the senate there. And then it went back to the senate and passed. So my assumption is there were no more changes made, but I don't know that for sure. I believe it's permissive. So as a result of that, the county will have to amend the ZDO barring some new legal advice from someone. I believe the county will have to amend the zoning code if we're going to pursue it, which means that we would be asking the board when we go discuss our work program in August for the next two years, whether they want to do that. And, you know, it'll be a vote, of course, of, of the board to include that or not. And then we would be, of course, coming to talk to you and doing a hearing and all the stuff we're doing right now. And I think that's all required. Um, I don't think it's a done deal, but I do need to see that final bill and I'll certainly let you know if it's different than.
Okay, it's, there is the enrolled version, which I think is the one. It's on, it's on the website right now.
And it should say may, counties may allow. I think that was like the only word they changed, um, between the senate and the house when it.
We as a county could opt out Jennifer?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And, and it's an, it is as, as Tammy said, it would, I don't think it's just rural.
I know it says right here rural residential.
Only rural.
Not urban, rural.
All right, well, originally it was everywhere, but not timber, ag forest and EFU. So it was rural residential and urban. And it, it would allow, yes, the housing, somebody on your property in an RV. There is the ability for local governments to adopt some standards of their own, but it would be probably hard like to do, it sort of, you could have some habitability standards for them and do inspections and that kind of thing. I don't know how that would be funded or staffed, quite frankly.
Cause we have so much money and people, why not?
There are, there's required to be some kind of a landlord tenant agreement, which I don't fully understand, because that's really not land use, although we may be learning about what exactly that involves.
Right.
And I believe.
Actually, you're right Jennifer, it says within the urban growth boundary, but not city. So you are right, there is urban in there.
So it could be Clackamas, Oak Grove, Oakfield Road, all of it. There does have to be a primary dwelling on the property and I believe does the la- I think the property owner has to live in the house. I'm not a hundred percent.
I didn't see that, um.
And that was my next question was, uh, second homes, are they allowed to have this nice accommodation to where they're?
Oh, I think it's one RV per, per property. But I, I'm thinking the draft I saw said that the main home had to be occupied by the property owner.
It's just, I mean, I can give you a hundred problems immediately. Who, if this is going in front of the board, uh, can we be caught talking with the board now about why we don't want to see this pass?
You are free as a community member to reach out to any board member you want to have a conversation about that or to make public comment or anything else, just, yeah, absolutely. And we haven't had any conversations, just, you know, full just, I mean, I'm not trying to hide anything. And, you know, we're, we of course work at the, but, but the board directs us to do this, we're going to move forward with it. But they haven't so far, uh, because we just haven't had those conversations.
Well, I don't think it's been signed by the governor yet, so.
Right, yeah, but there hasn't been any that I'm aware of. We planning has not had any like discussion about the legislation with anyone on the board. I just know it was introduced at the request of Chair Smith. I don't know the degree to which the full board has discussed it. I don't, I don't know. So we're, we'll be learning, I think, all sort of the general feelings when we go talk to them in August.
Uh, Tammy, why are you objecting to this?
Oh, let's see, our roads are falling apart. Um, having another house, you know, septic systems are built on the number of bedrooms. Now you bring in a 40-foot RV, you've got another two bedrooms and you're hooking up to the same septic. And there's going to be all the bootleg septics that are going to go in because they want their RV down by the creek. I can give you a huge list of why I would be objective to this. I mean, I get it, people are looking for a place to live. Parking an RV in front of everybody's house is not the way to do it.
So we, so we've got all these people living on the streets and the, on the sidewalks and, uh, RVs everywhere, uh, you know, uh, we're going crazy here.
No, I agree. Um, I just don't, I'm not sure that this is our solution. I kind of liked the hotel on Sunnyside, but several people didn't, so. I don't know, I mean, I, I, there, I'm not trying to be a NIMBY at all. I just know that the services are extremely limited in the rural area. And now you're talking about doubling the residences? Wow.
Do you really think these people are going to move out to the rural areas? Most of them are, they want to live in a, 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 an area where they can get transit, they can get public services and things like that. If they're going out into the rural area, what services are they going to get? Right?
Well, it, it's schools and transportation. And I mean, certainly a lot of our rural have the wells and septics that hopefully you're not bootlegging in and just doing, you know, hooking up to the current. It's, um, I really kind of really disagree with that statement, Michael. Drive around, I mean, go out to Beaver Creek Road, go into the Colton area, go Estacada area. One in 10 homes have one of these already illegally parked, all the slide outs, everything soaked out. This is happening. And it's not, you know, we don't have a code enforcement department that can handle this kind of load. So it's just, um, already an issue. And, um, you know, this would just compound it terribly.
Well, I, I, I've driven out to some of the rural areas and, and I haven't seen, uh, the problems that we're having right here in Portland. And, and, you know, I live in Milwaukee, I haven't seen that coming into my neighborhood and I hope I never do. But I haven't seen that showing up to the magnitude that it is in Portland. And then the, the, you know, even in Gresham, I've seen some of that, but not as much as in Portland. So, uh, you know, I, I don't know what's going to happen in the rural communities. And I, I'm totally opposed to the way we're addressing this homeless issue. We have not taken the stance that we should. I go back and I say, this happened in Portland when they had Occupy Portland several years ago. And they didn't address it then, and then it brought in all this problem.
Anyway, thank you. I mean, I just wanted to bring this up because this is something I want to get on top of right now. And if it's going to move forward, we just want to manage it to the best of our abilities, but.
Yeah, well, again, my expectation is that there will need to be an amendment to the zoning code with all the normal process. I'll just put a little pin in it to say, somebody may tell me I'm wrong about that. But the way I've read it, I think it's, it's not mandatory, it's permissive, which means you need to amend your code. So I would, you know, well, more to come on that.
Beautiful, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to bring that up tonight. I was asked by the hamlets to talk with the planning commission. Okay, thank you.
Tammy, can I hit on my neighborhood, which has what, 470 homes in it and owns the water system? Does that mean we need 470 new meters to go around? Do we need 470 laterals into the sewer system? Do we have to increase a pipe that crosses the river? What are we going to do with all this? I mean, you're talking a, a fifth, yeah, fifth of an acre each lot. So, yeah, that's a tight squeeze. I.
Why don't we, why don't we defer this to when we actually have to talk about it? It's, I think it's kind of a pointless exercise at this point. We don't know, we, I think Tammy's made a point, we all have our opinions. It's like, let's, let's move on.
Urban growth boundary expansion, is that still on the table? Or I heard that the legislature was going to throw out expanding the urban growth boundaries.
Oh, I, I mean, the semi-conductor supersiting thing passed in some form or another really early in the session where the governor has some authority, but I, I haven't followed it in that much detail. The more recently, there was a bill, they were talking about having some sort of fast tracking for small cities to, you know, for cities to make small additions or metro, but that didn't pass. So I, I don't think there's anything major that's changing.
Here's a question for you. If all these people were homeless and they came from our local area, why are we having to increase our facilities to support them? We had the facilities there when they were living at home and now we don't have it when they're not. It doesn't make sense to me.
Good question, Michael. That's all.
But not really on the agenda tonight. So let's, um, let's kind of move forward. As far as schedule review, uh, we are not meeting in July. I will officially tell you that. And then Darcy will hopefully follow up with emails for, because there's a couple of people who aren't here tonight, but we do not have any meetings in July. Let's see, at this point, I'm, I can't imagine we would meet in early August, but I'm not going to cancel that officially yet. So no meetings in July, TBD on the first meeting in August. We are meeting the second meeting in August, which is the 28th. Um, and we will be having the public hearing on the parks master plan, topic that you had a study session on recently.
Is it 28th or 21st?
It's the 28th, I think maybe it's not right on the spreadsheet. Somebody told me, possibly Darcy, will you check that? I can never remember, but I believe it's the second and fourth Mondays of the, of the month and that'd be the 28th. I saw that today when I was updating the.
Perfect.
The calendar, so I fixed it.
Perfect. So I, I will be out of the country, so I won't be there for that meeting.
Okay.
You have to be there.
Yeah, I know, this is the only one that I actually had issue with.
And this, I, I missed the date, August 28th?
August 28th. So if you cannot be at August 28th, will you please let Darcy know as soon as possible? Because we'll want to know if we have a quorum before we send the public notice, which has to go, you know, the 20 something of July, so.
I'll be in Amsterdam on 28th, so I will not be here.
I feel terrible for you Carrie.
Yeah, I'll go to Amsterdam, you, you stay here.
That was, that was in Amsterdam in May, I can give you some tips.
Awesome, I'll get hold of you.
All right.
Um, I had a real quick question. So both of the, each of our ZDOs tonight, 283 and 287, each had one section or issue, if you will, pulled out. We didn't, you know, we left them hanging. Where will they go next?
So the whole package still goes to the board. They'll, they have a hearing on the whole thing. It doesn't just stop based upon your recommendation, but it will go with a recommendation that they not approve the template test changes and that they approve the rest with the two little, you know, the non-conforming use change and the lot of record definition change, uh, to the original draft. And then, um, the relupa will go with a recommendation that they approve everything except the industrial zones. And that that just, they do nothing at this point. But we'll be explaining that what you mean is, you understand they need to do something, just not this. So we'd have to come back.
And so if the board goes with our recommendation on each ZDO, then we'll come back and revisit.
Um, we wouldn't be revisiting the template test, there's really nothing else to do on that. That would just be done. But the, um, the relupa issue for industrial zones, we would need to keep on our to-do list. There's not an immediate crisis in that, you know, in the industrial zones, but we would still be recognizing we have this potential risk. And so. And so I wouldn't be surprised if we included it in the next minor amendments package or something, because I think we are going to need to close it, the loop at some point.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, just, just, just a quick update. LSU is now the national baseball champions, winning, winning eighteen to four over Florida in the last game. Wahoo.
Good. Obviously an LSU fan.
He said he used to live in New Orleans, so there might be a connection.
Well, I, I, I played for LSU baseball in the late sixties.
Oh, wow. Fan then. Uh, just to, just to quick, just a quick follow-up. Uh, I, I did reach out to Brian. Uh, and he's up for getting together, but I proposed a week. Uh, I haven't heard a response back, but I thought I'd at least throw it out to the, to this group to see if it would be, uh, at some, someday that week would work for everyone. So I'm looking at the middle of July, week to the 17th. Whatever day Brian's available that week. Is that a good week for everyone?
You count me in.
Uh, I'll be at the office all week. I'm assuming the evening, depending on traffic and where it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good that week.
All right, I'll, I'll put some more pressure on. I'm telling you, everyone's available. We haven't heard from you yet.
Hey, hey, listen, make sure he shows up on time. He's always been.
Yeah, I'll tell him to be there. I'll tell him, I'll give him a different time.
Thank you.
Right.
Um, Tom, I could do, but earlier, the later in the week is my bigger horse driving competition. So if it was Monday or Tuesday, even maybe Wednesday would be way easier on me. Thanks.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind then. Thank you. Great.
Okay, I guess.
Okay.
Yay. Yeah, I, I guess I'll move to adjourn.
Let's move to.
I second that.
You don't want to have a few revisions to that motion, Louise?
No.
Tonight's theme.
They're already got my hand up. I'm done.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.